The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, February 28th, 2018 is now in order. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Badami.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Janoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes.
Here.
And Chair Kane.
Here. And Commissioner Birch is excused tonight.
She is absent.
Thank you. I ask that everyone stand and join Vice Chair Hudes in saluting the flag.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of Town Council and citizens of the town. There's several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and helpful. At the meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communications period or during the consideration of an agenda item, please complete the speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated, turn the card into a member of staff, and please print your name clearly so I can read it correctly. For anyone who tends to speak this evening, I'd ask that you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone so that you are speaking directly into it, state your name and address for the record, and in fairness to all who want to speak at this meeting, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. Subcommittee reports. In addition to the service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Vice Chair Hudes?
Yes, we had a meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee this evening. We had seven items, I believe. 202 University Avenue was continued to the end of March. 19 Hernandez, we recommended approval for construction of an addition. 511 North Santa Cruz, we denied the request to remove the property from the historic resource inventory. 16883 Spencer, we approved the recommendation to remove from the inventory. 236 Edelen, we recommended approval of the technical demo and construction of a residence in the historic district. And 32 Walnut, we recommended approval of a proposed single-story addition. That's it.
Vice Chair Hudes, was there an election?
Oh, yes, there was. And, let's see, Nancy Durham was elected chair, and for some reason, I was elected vice chair.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? We now move to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda. I'll call your name, step to the podium, speak into the mic. When the yellow light comes on, it means you have 30 seconds left. When the red light comes on, it means you're done. Do we have any cards for...? We do not. So we move to consent calendar. The consent calendar has items that may be acted on by a single motion. But before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or any member of the commission may request that the item be removed from consent. Tonight, we have one item on consent: approval of the minutes of the February 14th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a request to pull the item, or is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Badami.
I move to approve the minutes of February 14th, 2018.
Do we have a second? Commissioner O'Donnell. Any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye. Passes unanimously, six-zero. We move to the public hearings portion of our agenda. We consider tonight's agenda item two, which is... Twin Oaks Drive, Surrey Farms. It's Plan Development PD 10-006. It's Environmental Impact Report 12-001. It's General Plan Amendment, GP 12-001. And the Williamson Act Contract, WA 11, cancellation. This item requests approval of a general plan amendment from Agriculture to Hillside Residential, cancellation of the existing Williamson Act contract, and a plan development to rezone property from RC to HR1 PD to allow subdivision of the one lot into 10 lots, and construction of 10 new single-family residences and removal of large protective trees. This is APN 532-16-006. And Ms. O'Neal, will you be giving the report tonight?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. The project in front of you tonight is a request by Tom Dodge of Surrey Farm Estates to develop his 17.5 acres of vacant land. His proposal is to amend the general plan and zoning designations to allow a 10-lot residential subdivision. The project before you involves multi-step process. The first step in their process was a meeting of the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee on September 8th of 2010. The current proposal before you this evening is to amend the general plan designation, change the zoning, including a plan development overlay, cancellation of the existing Williamson Act contract, and the environmental impact report associated with those proposals. They come as one decision because they are intertwined, but they also set the stage for future applications. The future applications would include a subdivision and roadway improvement construction, 10 architecture-in-site applications as currently proposed, and associated building permits. This current proposal before you has gone to the General Plan Committee in 2012, 2014, and 2015. The final decision will be made by the Town Council based on your recommendation. As described in the staff report, the Williamson Act cancellation findings have been reviewed by the State Department of Conservation. The general plan amendment is necessary for the proposed development because of the agricultural designation applied to all Williamson Act lands. The plan development zoning is required in the hillsides for subdivisions of five lots or more. The HR1 designation that's proposed as the underlying zoning below the plan development overlay is based on the surrounding zonings. Approximately half of the perimeter is in the HR1, but the other properties also include some in the HR2 1/2, R112, and R110. The exceptions that are requested as part of this PD include depths of cut and fill and construction outside the LRDA for portions of the roadway and one of the proposed driveways. An EIR was prepared, and that included the draft EIR, recirculation of the biological and alternative sections, and a final EIR. All potential impacts were reduced to less than significant with mitigation. There are numerous concerns, as you have seen in your written comments, from the nearby neighbors. In the written staff report, staff recommends approval of the proposed project, but staff also supports consideration of the two-access alternative described in the plans and in the draft environmental impact report. The two-access alternative is different from the proposed project in the following ways. The single-access roadway would be split to create two separate cul-de-sacs, one with access off of Sierra Vista Court, giving access to four of the lots; second, from Twin Oaks Drive, which gives access to the lower six lots. This would avoid the riparian area at both ends of the riparian area and reduce the cuts and fills, depths that are requested. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the findings in Exhibit 5 and consider recommending approval of the EIR, the GP amendment, the Williamson Act cancellation, and the plan development ordinance rezoning in Exhibit 15. In addition to planning and public work staff, we also have the town's peer review consultants available to answer any questions. This concludes staff's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. And before we begin, let me try framing it. That was an excellent report. I want to boil it down to a few words. We're not voting to accept or deny the project, per se. We're either recommending a go-no-go to Town Council on five items: the general plan item, the Williamson Act, the PD application, the EIR, and I intend to put in a comment on the alternatives. Does that frame our work tonight?
That does summarize it, yeah.
We have questions for staff? Commissioner Hudes?
This probably for the town attorney. I want to be respectful of the information that's provided to us for consideration. And we received a desk item at around 11:00 AM today, which was 62 pages, including... I can't... It's hard for me to tell what's new or what... But it seems important. Yet, I have... I just want to make sure that this framework makes sense, that this material needs to be considered, but that it's appropriate to put the weight on the consideration that's somewhat related to the amount of time we have available to consider this. And we wouldn't, for instance, stop the hearing for everyone to analyze 62 pages before proceeding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm...
You can give it the weight that you feel necessary. You can ask questions about that, and hopefully, we can answer those. But you received it 11:00 AM. I didn't realize it was in there until much later in the day. So I've barely had time to review it, too. But our consultants here, many of the issues that are raised in that letter were also raised in the final EIR as response to comments.
Right. Okay, so it'll be helpful when we get testimony, perhaps, to ask the applicant what's new in here compared to what we'd received previously?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Aside from that, do we talk to the applicant or the citizens about the value of getting those letters in earlier so we can study them perhaps over the weekend? I, too, didn't open my mail until 3 o'clock. I almost hit print, right? Didn't have enough paper. But it's horrible to write important letters like that and have an hour or two to go over them. Do we encourage that these guys come in earlier?
We do. On this particular project, we sent out email to everyone who had contacted us via email with comments on the environmental impact report and between that time and now so that they would be aware when the project plans were up. And that gave them the 10-day notice, in addition to the notice cards that were sent out. In that email, we do state that the deadline to get into the staff report is the Friday before the hearing and encourage that, though comments are accepted until 11:00 on the day of the hearing.
Well, it's a shame, because they looked important, they looked passionate, and I couldn't give them the full attention they deserved. Commissioner Hanson?
I want to hear the comments from the public, so I won't ask too many questions right now. But it seemed to me that, and we also heard this at the General Plan Committee, that the Williamson contract is kind of the first step, even though it kind of all goes together. And so, just a couple of questions on the Williamson Act. The timeline, my understanding is they... I know they filed a notice two years ago, or two and a half years ago, and then they are now asking for cancellation. So there was some mention in the staff report, and I thought at our General Plan Committee meeting, if there was an approval for the cancellation, that the notice would allow the Williamson Act to automatically expire on that property in 10 years? Or did I get that wrong?
So the notice of non-renewal does result in expiration of the Williamson Act contract after 10 years. In this case, I believe the expiration would be February of 2025.
So supposing that this didn't get approved regardless of any approval process in the town, the Williamson Act contract will expire in 2025?
Unless the notice of non-renewal is taken back by the applicant.
Okay. And then, just one other question on the Williamson Act. The findings that were listed in our staff report are very similar to what I found online from the state of California. But there was also mention of a resolution that the Town Council had created, 1979, 150. And are the findings that in that resolution similar or exactly the same as the state?
So the findings that are required for cancellation of the Williamson Act are the ones that were listed in the required findings you have, I believe it's Exhibit 5. And those are true for the town as well as the state. I believe the resolution that you're referring to has to do with the zoning and general plan designation of Williamson Act lands rather than the findings, or maybe the review process. There were a couple of different resolutions referred to in the staff report. But no specific findings were added in that resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Badami?
Would the chair be interested in asking for disclosures from commissioners? Because I would need to make one.
I was coming to that.
Okay.
First, let's have a show of hands for people who are able to visit the subject property. And are there any disclosures? Commissioner?
I had incidental contact with Jill Fordice at 191 Long Meadow while visiting the site from her location.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Separately, but I did the same thing. And Mrs. Fordice was very gracious, said hello, showed me her backyard, and that was the end of it.
I likewise had incidental contact with some of the neighbors. They simply led me to where the project was, and I listened. I didn't otherwise engage. And then Commissioner Hudes and I, he climbed on top of the mountain. I wouldn't do that. But we found the riparian corridor, we walked around, and we got as good a look as you possibly could get. Anything else? Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none? I'll open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. Mr. Griffin, will you be speaking on this matter? State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission.
Is that working now? Yes, it is. I'm speaking on behalf of the Dodge family, and I have a little bit of history to start out the presentation. What we have here is a photo from 1953 that shows Bob Dodge up on the highest portion of the property. And if... I've got to turn it on, I guess. Okay. And this is the high knoll on the property. This is... You can see the cut for the Long Meadow Drive. These are pads for the home. The construction has already begun on the property. This is the Witkin Residence at this point. And approximately in this location is the site of the Witkin Subdivision, which has four lots on it. And then you can see a building here that was, at that time, was called the Hillside Country School. And that followed along and soon became the school that is there right now. This is a map that was prepared for tentative map in 1959. And it demonstrates that the map prepared by Hunt Engineering and labeled as a tentative map.
Excuse me, Mr. Griffin. When you turn your head, could you take the mic with you?
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
We don't want to lose a word.
Yes. The... It does work. This map, as I said, was in 1959, and it was intended to be the last phase of Surrey Farm. There are 15 lots, 14 lots in the lower section here. This is the Witkin property at this point, and Twin Oaks is right here. This is access road. And Bob was reserving this lot, this 15th lot, for his home up there. Zoning at that time was R120. The plan demonstrates that the Dodge family and Bob always planned to subdivide the site, and it was the last phase of Surrey Farm. This is a study that we prepared and submitted to the CDAC in 2010. You can see that clearly shows that development has taken place all around the property. This is the Hillbrook School, and this is Sierra Vista. And the other homes at the top of Sierra Vista, this is a large parcel with two-and-a-half acre zoning in this area in here. And then this goes down to Brookacre at this point, right here. Twin Oaks is right along this point. This being Long Meadow, and the Witkin Subdivision is right in this position here. The hillside boundary for this designation in the zoning ordinance is approximately this point across the property. This area is in the hillside. This area is not in the hillside development. The two-and-a-half acre zoning, as I said, is in the upper portions here. The one acre is adjacent on Brookacre. And then this is R110 in the Twin Oaks area, the original subdivision. And this is R112 for the Witkin Subdivision. As I said, there's four sites that were subdivided later from the Witkin property here. And the Hillbrook School sides the property as well. So for preliminary discussions with staff in 1959, Bob reviewed that. He has, over the time, reviewed it with staff. And at one point, Bob granted an easement across the property for allowing the development of the Brookacre subdivision, and most recently, the Witkin subdivision that utilizes that sewer. When placed in the Williamson Act, it was a simple 10 years at the time. So that in 10-year contract, at the end of 10 years, it would automatically expire. Along the way, the law was changed to a rolling 10 years. The town placed the property in the RC zoning designation as a holding zone for future development. At one time, the town envisioned connecting Brookacre across to Shannon Road. That was before Sierra Vista was developed. Our proposed plan uses access from Twin Oaks. So this... Wrong, but... This is access from Twin Oaks. This is the Witkin property, and these are the four lots that were developed and split off from the Witkin property. The... We have three... The site proposed has three-and-a-half acres of open space, and it preserves the highest point of the site. It provides for extension of the county trail from Sierra Vista. That trail would follow from here around this point of the habitat area. The riparian habitat comes down around, and it connects with Brookacre. Access to the upper four lots requires a crossing of the riparian area, and this is where the largest amount of fill, approximately 13-foot, would occur. And it provides access to the open space. We originally submitted for a straight R140 rezoning, and we resubmitted as a PD and showing private streets as required by the Public Works Department. We are not, I want to emphasize, we are not using the plan development ordinance or zoning to increase the density allowed in the ordinance. The trail extension connects with the three-and-a-half acre dedicated open space, and this project, as presented, qualified for a negative declaration. The EIR was a voluntary preparation by the applicant. We have conducted three outreach sessions with our neighbors along the way. During the EIR preparation, we found an easement for public road access from Sierra Vista. This... Stop doing that. So this area, this right here, is an easement that was offered to the town, and it was reviewed by the Town Council, and it was deferred for a future acceptance. So utilizing that access, we developed this two-access property, two-access version. And this would be through this section right here. Off of Sierra Vista would serve the upper four lots, and Twin Oaks would serve six homes on the lower side of it. The alternate plan eliminates the need to cross the riparian habitat corridor area here, but it still allows for the trail extension to come up the road here and follow through and around the habitat area and connect with Brookacre. The trail also connects to the dedicated open space. We are also providing space for a new water pump station off of Sierra Vista access point. That would be approximately in this location right here. As stated in the EIR, this plan is considered environmentally superior. Four homes would have access via Sierra Vista, and six homes access via Twin Oaks. This site reduces traffic on Twin Oaks by 40%. San Jose Water has indicated to us that there is a current need for a new pump station as the existing pressure on Sierra Vista... as the existing pressure on Saravista and the homes above is below the minimum needed pressure. This pump station is needed now and is not because of this application. After being denied by other property owners, we have offered San Jose Water Company a location for this station. The site shows dedicated four acres of open space, and there is no road crossing the riparian habitat. Each home will be processed for a separate ANS review. We believe that there are community benefits that we have provided with this. Direct community benefits offered by this application are extending the public trail from Saravista to Brookacre, connecting this trail to the open space. And it also provides a much-needed emergency access to and from Brookacre that currently is a dead end. We provide land for building the much-needed pump station serving the homes above this site. And it provides a dedicated four-acre open space. In summary, this proposed alternate plan provides for sale housing that will add to the town's housing element commitment. We respectfully request that you recommend approval to the town council, and we are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, when we go to the other portion of the public hearing, would you fill out a speaker card, please?
I will do that.
Questions for Mr. Griffin. Commissioner Hanson.
As I understand it from the staff report, we're being asked to approve the single-access version. And maybe I misunderstood that, but since the two-access version is environmentally superior by the EIR, and you noted all the benefits of it, why wouldn't we be looking at that instead?
That's... Our recommendation, our request, would be to approve the two-access plan.
Okay. Well, we can talk to staff about that because the conditions kind of lined up more with the one-access alternative. And then I had a question about the open space. So I think you answered my question. There's a question of maintenance, and then there's access. So I understand the maintenance is, you would be maintaining the private roads because that's the way we do PDs in the hillsides. And then also, you would be maintaining the open space as opposed to the town?
Yes. The homeowners association would be set up for not only maintaining the streets, but also the drainage systems. And it would also include the trail and the open space.
Okay. And you... Your intent, as far as public access, it sounded like the public trail was going to connect to the open space. So are you intending for the residents that, you know, live in the neighborhood on either side to be able to access that area if they...
I think that's one of the requirements of the trail, is that the public be allowed to access and utilize the trail. And we have purposely put it through the common area or the open space area so that it can be utilized as well.
Okay. I didn't see a public access easement in there, but maybe I missed that. Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, does that mean that the open space is available to people that don't live there?
It's not available to live there. It's available to use on an incidental basis along with the trail.
So I mean, people who don't live there? I could go up and use that open space?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hootis.
So I have a follow-up question to that. I'm looking at Sheet A1A, and I'm looking at Street B, which seems to be the access closest to the open space. It appears to me that that street ends maybe a couple of hundred feet short of the open space. So how would that access be achieved?
The trail follows along the edge of the roadway.
But on the two access...
It follows right along here, and it runs around the edge of the habitat area. And this is the open space here, abuts that street.
Okay. Could you put up A1A?
This one?
This A1A?
Oh, I don't have that one. Okay. So the... This is the open space?
Yes.
And this is the trail, following right along here. And it circles around the end of the habitat area, comes down along here, and then connects with Brookacre.
Okay. But Street B ends, correct?
Street B ends at this point right here, but the trail continues on through. So this is the trail. It comes up, and it crosses over, and then comes around this point.
Okay. And is there access to that trail from Street B?
Yes. There is access. It follows along this Street A, and it also follows along the edge of Street B.
Okay. Well, I was concerned that someone might put up a fence on Lot 7.
On this lot?
Because there's a driveway. They could, you know, do a gated driveway or something.
Okay. This is... The trail, access to the trail along Street B would be right along this portion here. But it also comes from Saravista Court. There's an easement right here for utilities, and this trail begins here. Currently, the trail runs in this dashed line all the way down the side of Mrs. Hoffner's property next door. And this part could be abandoned because the trail was originally coming down the side here, and it comes down to Hillbrook School.
Okay. I think you've answered my question. There might be a condition related to it, but it looks to me like there is access to the open space for the community from Saravista by means of a trail.
Yes. And any gate that would be so erected for this lot would be in this vicinity right in here, which is separate from the trail.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? Maybe this is the time to do it. The EIR, the draft and the final, are really extraordinary documents. And the issues of potential significant impact, because this is so rural and currently pristine in its ruralness. A lot of the conditions that are addressed in the EIR had to be mitigated. And the mitigations were admirable, creative, seemed to address the issue. But time and time again, it said that the continuance of these mitigations would be under the responsibility of the HOA. Then I got concerned. Mr. Griffin, do you know how that works? Is there 10 members of the HOA? And do they all have rakes and barrels? I mean, how do we manage their management of all the many, many mitigation items in the EIR?
Well, what we've tried to do is address that in such a way that some of the items are in place on a more permanent basis. One issue, for instance, is there's a very large oak tree that's in this position right in here. And we are going to be putting some very large rock boulders that we worked out with the arborist, the town's arborist, so as to eliminate any possibility of grading or modifications around that tree. And it's on the cover of her report as well. It's a magnificent oak tree that should be preserved, and rightfully so. In addition to that, we have a 10-foot setback from all of the habitat area that allows for the building space to be and the roadways to be constructed outside of that. The mitigation factors involved there are the responsibility of the homeowners association, as you say. But they will be under the auspices of the town to see that they are enforced.
Thank you. Commissioner Hootis.
I had a question about Lot 7, which is the one that adjoins the open space. And have you done the calculations on the LRDA on that lot? And I'm just looking at whether, you know, due to the steepness of that side of the hill, you've been able to be completely in accordance with the LRDA?
Yes. I believe that's like a 28% average slope on that site. And the... What we've done is this property line here has been modified to allow for preservation of the highest areas of the site, the high point. The building site is in the LRDA. What the request is for this roadway to be graded, which is outside of the LRDA. That is one of the exceptions. However, that is also following a roadbed that's already cut there. So it's an existing access road that's on the site right now, and we're utilizing that.
So that... Because I walked that today, and it didn't strike me that it was a road. It struck me that there was some grading there at one time, maybe a long time ago. But do you really consider that to be a road?
Well, I would consider it the beginnings of a road. I know that I've driven on it before, so it is passable.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
We now invite comments from the public. And this is going to be a short meeting. I need speaker cards. On the benches in front of you. Are there any others? All right. Ms. Cindy Shanker? Ms. Shanker, adjust the mic. And for the record, give us your name and address, please.
Is that okay? That's loud. My name is Cindy Shanker, and I have lived on Saravista Court, number 15949, for over 27 years. I feel very strongly that the planned development is highly incompatible with general plan goal LU6, quote, "to preserve and enhance the existing character and sense of place in residential neighborhoods." Both the Saravista and Twin Oaks neighborhoods are long-established neighborhoods whose character and sense of place would be adversely affected by this development. I'm sure you will hear a lot about that from others through written comments and here tonight. So I will only say that I believe the planned development will destroy much of what has made our neighborhood a place that we love. And that is my number-one position. Number two, I do have a question, I guess, to pose to you. I don't necessarily expect you to answer it tonight, but I hope that you will think about it. Why are you being asked to approve the two-access EIR when, this is a quote, "The original project's environmental impacts identified in Chapter 4 would be less than significant or less than significant with implementation of specified mitigation measures." Think about that statement. If impacts are less than significant, why is there a whole new EIR? I don't think it has anything to do with the environment. The reason is that opposition to the project from the Twin Oaks side has been so vocal that the developer will do anything to try and appease them. Saravista Court is a small cul-de-sac that doesn't have enough residents to compete with the level of opposition from the other side. As a result, you have, you now have only a two-access proposal to consider that involves constructing a road on Saravista Court. So our cul-de-sac of five houses would now have a road across one neighbor's property to access four more houses. That's a huge increase for our small neighborhood. I believe there are potential issues with the easement, which was never intended to be used for access to the Dodge property, other than the separate utility easement. This property was never part of our development and should not become part of it by taking land from one of our neighbors for the road. Tom Dodge is willing to provide access for the entire development through his own property, and as noted, the environmental impacts would be less than significant or less than significant with mitigation. You should think about that before you approve a plan that involves taking land from an owner who hasn't offered it. And then I wanted to comment that the owner of the property proposed for the road hasn't moved into their home. They had no knowledge of this development. It was not disclosed to them, not your fault. But it's kind of, it seems a little inappropriate to be discussing it without their knowledge.
Thank you. Questions for the speakers. Commissioner Badami.
Ms. Shanker, I read your letter that we received today at 10:58 a.m. And you talked about 10 lots being too dense and that the number of lots should be reduced overall. How many lots do you envision be developed on that site?
I mean, I would say half of that number. I'm throwing that out, but I think that 10 is pretty dense. So that would be a number that, to me, would seem more reasonable and more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, would have less of an impact.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
What is the size of your lot?
One acre.
Thank you.
It's a little over an acre, but about.
Commissioner Hootis.
Thank you for your thoughts on this. And it's, again, as some of my fellow commissioners have expressed, it's a little strange that we're considering an option that wasn't the one that was the proposed option. But to be explicit, do you have... What is your explicit preference between the two-access and the proposed one-access?
Well, my explicit preference is for the proposed one-access because I live in a house that is right across the street from where the two-access road is going to go through our neighbor's property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. Maggie Lee? We can't do that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maggie Lee. I'm here on behalf of the new owner of 15955 Saravista Court. Actually, Cindy alerted us about this coming issue last Friday. So this has come to us as a complete surprise. That was never disclosed to the new owner. And so at this afternoon, they were actively engaged, a new legal counsel, to look into it. Because during the transaction, we know there was a utility easement. We did not realize the city could use easement to create access road. So that's the current stand of the new owner. They will oppose this two-access proposal, and they were engaged, the legal counsel, to look into this issue. Yeah.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I assume that the easement we're talking about is recorded?
Yes.
Have you read the easement?
Yes, we did.
And did you see that it does permit vehicular and pedestrian access?
No.
You think it doesn't, or you didn't see it? Which...
We... The preliminary title said it was a utility easement.
Did you read the easement? Not what the prelim said, but what did you read the easement?
No, I did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hootis.
Yes. Just to clarify, which property are you talking about? I'm looking at, again, A1A, and I'm looking at the entrance from Saravista Court.
Yes. 15955.
Unfortunately, I don't have that. Is it the one that's on the east side or the west side?
It's just west of the easement or the pathway.
Okay. So it's the one to the west?
That's the lot will be affected by this two-access road because part of the lot, you would create that access road, basically make portion of your lot probably not usable at all.
Okay. I'll have a question for staff on it later. Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Lee Cantona?
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. I do not live in the area. And so my comments do not reflect the issues that some of the neighbors have brought up. I'm just looking at the E I R and the project itself. When I read the E I R, I was surprised that it said that it was not possible legally to not approve the lower, a lower-density alternative. And from my experience, unless there are new laws that I'm not aware of from my professional experience of about 15 years ago or so, I didn't understand that. And also in, in the E I R, it implies that this, that while the town council has the authority to approve the environmental superior alternative, that it's dated in such a way to make you believe or me, I had to read it several times. I thought, what? They can't approve the alternative, superior alternative, alternative? That didn't make any sense to me. And I, I think what is being said is that the town council has the authority to approve the environmental superior alternative, but they're not required to. That information is provided so that the council and the planning commission can make informed decisions on the project itself. That's one, one of my comments. The other comment that I'd like to make is that, given what is in the documents, the two-access, access alternative clearly is a superior alternative environmentally. Now, that's environmentally and, of course, other issues come into approving or not approving a project. I was also surprised that there wasn't really a discussion of reduced density or reduced number of lots to give a full range of possibilities. And it was interesting to me that some of these things that I'm saying, when I looked at the desk item for tonight, and I didn't pick it up until about 5 o'clock, seemed to raise some of these same questions that I'm, I'm raising. And the last thing I would say is that the two-access alternative is much kinder to the trees. And on top of that, I would say that the number of trees that are being removed and transplanted is at a pretty high percentage of the trees that are supposed to be protected and transplanted trees are supposed to be considered removed.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? I have one. You express concerns over density and intensity as coming from the E I R. As I read the E I R, I was surprised that it said the density and intensity was consistent and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Did I read that wrong?
You read that wrong. What I was saying is that there was no reduced-density alternative seriously discussed in the alternative sections, not in terms of compatibility with the neighborhoods, but in terms of reduced environmental impacts.
Let us not start that clock until the display is ready. But they didn't know that.
Hi, I'm Jill Fordice. I'm at 191 Long Meadow Drive. I live there with my husband and five children since 1999. Thank you for taking the time to visit the site. And also I hope that you've had the time to read our lengthy comments, which we were instructed were due by 11 o'clock today, which is what we tried to meet after reading the thousand pages. When we purchased our home, the primary features were both the quiet, family-friendly streets and the rural setting backing up to land that is zoned as resource conservation space. While there are many issues with regard to this project, many of which I've written about, I'd like to focus on the fundamental change to the aesthetics of our neighborhood and the natural habitat and the overall inconsistency of this proposed development with the town's stated goals of sustainability and preservation. The E I R surprisingly found no aesthetic issues at all with this planned development, although the entire backdrop to Surrey Farms would be changed from an open, grassy hillside to a neighborhood with 10 homes or possibly a ghost town of infrastructure of streets and house pads that never get built, managed by a homeowners association that we don't know about. It will irrevocably change our neighborhood. The hillside is home to Ross Creek, which will also be adversely impacted by the development. In order to develop the streets, the applicant's asking for an exception to the riparian setback requirement. Those setback requirements exist to protect both the waters and the amphibians that rely on the waters. The hillside itself will be damaged and degraded and the applicant is also asking for an exception to the hillside grading requirements. In the staff report released February 23rd, it states applicants proposing cut and fill depths greater than those permitted by the hillside standards. Both protected and non-protected species will lose their habitat forever. 70 trees are being removed, a half acre of ancient oak forest. 81% of the land is being developed. The land is home to deer, owls, migratory birds, wild turkeys and other native wildlife. The E I R asserts that the project is consistent with the 2020 general plan because prior to putting it into the Williamson Act, the property was zoned for residential use. This rationale relies on land used from a 1961 general plan, which was in effect prior to the development of our neighborhood and prior to it being placed in the Williamson Act. The 2020 general plan supersedes all pre-existing general plans. According to the hillside specific plan, placing lands in the Williamson Act contract should be encouraged by both town and county. It logically follows that cancellation should be discouraged. The applicant is asking the town to take the extremely unusual step of canceling a Williamson Act contract. I am unaware of a circumstance where the town has taken this step. It is appropriate in emergency situations, not where the objectives could instead be served by non-renewal. The land was placed into the Williamson Act contract in 1975 and has remained there for more than 40 years. The intent was to preserve the rural quality of the land, recognizing the maintenance of open space and land of rural character holds significant value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hootis.
Yeah, clearly your comments are quite strong about the, the project itself, but I wanted to ask you if you would comment on the two alternatives, the two-access versus the one-access. Do you have an opinion about one of those in terms of a preference?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to get in a thing with our Saro Vista neighbors who I absolutely appreciate what they are experiencing. I do believe the two-access alternative is less onerous to our neighborhood and it's also apparently environmentally superior because it saves more trees and stays out of some of the riparian areas.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I can offer. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson. Oh, please, more.
Thank you for your detailed letters. I noted that you had written a detailed letter in response to the draft D I R and then there was also one in our 62 pages that we had today. I was able to cut, to kind of scan through it, but I was hoping maybe you could kind of net out relative to the comments you made about the draft D I R and what you sent in today. You know, what were the main points that you wanted to convey?
With regard to the E I R?
Well, I, I think that your, your comments on the E I R were pertaining to the E I R and that I think a lot of your letter today, if I understood it, was, was related to the E I R as well.
Yeah.
So what is the, what is the main differences that you wanted to convey to us?
I think the mo, the main difference that I wanted to point out today is the exceptions that are being asked. The mitigation, which is managed by this homeowners association, is not sufficient to protect us. There are now three exceptions that are being asked for. There's a grading exception, there's a setback exception, and there's also this Williamson Act cancellation. And a long, a large portion of my response today also focused on this argument that's in the E I R that states that this is agricultural land and it can't be used that way because there would, you know, it's not suitable for agriculture, but it's, it's never been used that way. In 1948, apparently the last orchards were there. Our neighborhood was developed in the late 60s, early 70s. It was put into the Williamson Act in 1975. And ever since then, myself and my Surrey Farms neighbors have believed that it was put there as a feature of the neighborhood, that Mr. Dodge, when he developed it, he devoted this resource conservation space as it makes the neighborhood what it is. And so I did spend a long time talking about the fact that this was never truly an agricultural operation. It was zoned that way as resource conservation space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned, you mentioned that the developer was requesting an exception on the riparian corridor. Now, that would be of great concern to me, only I didn't see that.
It's, it's asking for a setback exception. It's in the E I R. I could look and point you to the right place.
Was that, was that?
The vice chair might know.
Was that more of, of mitigation?
Um, no. In fact, it was offered as mitigation, the mitigation is the granting of the exception to the requirement, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hootis?
Maybe I could just follow up on that for a minute. I'm looking at page 10 of 45 of the, the D E I R, of the, in the staff report, the, the findings from the E I R. And it says that there are, that mitigation for this issue, and it offers three options. And one option is to use a mitigation bank. Another option is a grading permit with plantings. And a third option is a wetland restoration plan. And we'll come back to the applicant on those options because it seems they're, they're offered to them. Do you have an opinion about which of those options would be the best one?
Yes, and just to be clear, we know this is a separate issue. This wetlands issue is a separate issue than the setback issue. Is that your understanding?
Yes, it's correct. It's, it's the, it's issue around biological resources mitigation, measure 4.37B.
Yeah, so our opinion and our, our beliefs with regard to wetland restoration is that they shouldn't be able to pay for wetlands to be restored somewhere else, that it should happen on-site if at all possible.
Okay, so that would be two or three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm the third of the four houses on Saro Vista. So our little four-house court is now in a kind of a difficult situation.
Sir, I'm sorry. Give me your name and address.
I'm sorry. Scott Brown, 15961 Saro Vista Court.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. So I'm the third Saro Vista Court. I'm very, very empathetic to the concerns of Twin Oaks. I am an owner of a Williamson Act land that is right next door to this, that has five acres that I'm preserving and four acres that my neighbor is preserving. And I believe very strongly that you should not cancel the Williamson Act land. I believe that covenant is something I should abide by and so should they. Relative to Saro Vista, there is a property line that runs down Saro Vista Court and there's another one that runs up Saro Vista Road. It was clearly put there to protect the Saro Vista community. None of us had an idea that there was a horse trail there. I mean, the little line that goes to that court, you know, the road that they're proposing is actually halfway down it. It's a very small road and the traffic going onto Shannon Road is dangerous. We were talking about it among the neighbors, turning onto Shannon Road, if you've done that from Saro Vista, is a life and death experience because people are flying down Shannon Road at high speed or coming around the blind corner up. And so to add traffic to that very small road and that's a very small community is a huge issue. But I think it also comes down to fairness. All of us bought the homes and we looked at the property lines and, yeah, maybe we didn't do our job to know there's a horse trail there, but you know what? There's no horses that I've ever seen there. And there's a fence, in fact, put in place by these property owners that had been there forever, blocking any access to that trail. So it's clearly not been used. And I think for those new owners that just spoke, it's an incredibly difficult thing to say, we're going to pave a road across the road that, the land that you just bought and the property lines that are there that we all kind of bought against and believe fundamentally that all of you are defending in your very important role. So I believe fundamentally, as a Williamson Act owner, I'm going to defend that. And the hill that looks up from Hillbrook School, in addition to this one, is mine and I will protect it, the five acres that's there and the four acres that my neighbors have. And I believe that punching a hole through our neighbor's land on Saro Vista Court is a very bad idea for the traffic, for the safety of our children. It's not prepared for it. I don't think proper due diligence was done on this option two. And it's a surprise to all of us, but mostly I think it's just about doing the right thing for the four people of Saro Vista Court. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your educational letters on the Williamson Act and thank you for your choice to continue your lands inside that act.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Craig Fordice. I live at 191 Long Meadow Drive. And I just have a few items here for you. So as far as light, the hillside does not contain any current unnatural source of light. When you look at our back window at night, there's only what you can see by the moonlight. The development of a neighborhood on the hill will create multiple new sources of unnatural light and glare from houses and cars and streets, substantially impacting scenic vistas and degrading the visual character of the site and its surroundings. Noise. The hillside also does not contain any unnatural noise, source of noise. The E I R acknowledges that the project will cause a permanent increase in ambient noise levels in the project site vicinity. Instead of hearing birds, frogs, coyotes and the wind in the trees, we'll hear the car doors, alarms, cars, people, phones, stereos and televisions. Construction. The construction alone of this project will drastically affect our way of life. The construction has the potential for going on indefinitely. The mitigation measures provide no relief. Construction with its accompanying dirt, dust, pollution and noise are allowed for 12 hours a day on the weekdays and 10 hours a day on weekends and holidays. Traffic. We're all aware of the traffic problems in Los Gatos. According to the E I R, this project would add approximately eight additional trips in the a.m. peak hour and 10 trips in the p.m. peak hour when the project's fully developed. This seems like a startling low estimate. As for my household alone, there are generally at least six trips and upwards of 12 trips during peak hours. We've also asked the town to consider the effects of construction traffic on our neighborhood. We anticipate that the development of the infrastructure in 10 individual homes would result in years and years of trucks, dust, pollution and traffic up and down Long Meadow all day, every day, even apparently on weekends, according to the E I R. It would change the landscape of our neighborhood for this generation of residents and beyond. Our children would not be allowed out in the streets. We would have to plan our trips out according to the construction traffic. The E I R estimates that during the initial phase of road and infrastructure construction, approximately 494 one-way truck trips of excess excavated material would be hauled off-site. It estimates the grading phase as taking approximately 15 days, generating 30 tri, 33 truck trips per day or approximately six truck trips per hour. This is not a relatively small amount of construction traffic as stated in the E I R. Is one truck every 10 minutes on a quiet residential street a relatively small amount? Thank you. Yes?
Commissioner Hootis? Commissioner Hootis?
Just real quick, do you have a explicit preference between the two-access and the one-access options?
My explicit preference is none.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the note you left on your door today, giving us access to your property in your backyard. My question is, how big is that dog?
Yeah, he's about 70 pounds, I think.
See, I thought the note was sort of baiting me in, so I sent Commissioner Hootis in first.
Thank you.
Sarah Brown?
My name is Sarah Brown, and I live at 15961 Saravista Court. We're at the top of the hill, and my husband spoke earlier. I think we have an interesting perspective, because we've just moved to Los Gatos a year and a half ago. We have four children, and we've moved around a fair amount, most recently living in Singapore. And prior to that, my husband and I grew up in Wisconsin, which has a lot of rolling hills and beautiful farmland, and in Raleigh, North Carolina, which is also a beautiful area with a lot of nature and trees and oceans and mountains. So one of the reasons why we love Los Gatos, I'm quite sure, is because of the beautiful area and the mountains that surround us and the rolling hills and the parks and lots of places to go and ride bikes and walk on trails and walk our dog. And when we were lucky enough to find this beautiful property at the top of Saravista Court, which is one of the original properties in that whole area, the Yarboff family built it in 1970, we were astounded with the views that we have, but also the view that we, that our hill, nothing to do with us, but that our hill has. We have five acres of this gorgeous grassy hill. And when I walk around, all the way from my house, all the way down to Blossom Hill Park, you can see our hill from different spots. And right now, because of the rain, because of the winter, it's bright green. It's beautiful. We have these uppercut trees that dot the hillside. And the hill that we are talking about for this development is, what, three times as large as ours? It's beautiful. There are deer there, there are foxes there, there are coyotes there that freak us out often. And it's just such a shame and such a shock to me to think that the town would approve destroying that hill to put 10 houses up. At the benefit of whom? Doesn't benefit any of us that see this beautiful grassy hill. It made me sad to see that picture of Mr. Dodge with his dog. I stand on my hill with my dog. You can probably see me if you have access to binoculars. You can watch me play on my hill with my dog. That was him in 1950. You know, that's going to be gone. There's no trail right now through the property, although I guess they say that's an advantage, that there would be a trail there. So I implore you to not rescind the Williamson Act. In fact, I'd like to try to read something really quickly. This is from the conservation.ca.gov, so I didn't make this up. "The State of California's Attorney General's Office has appined that cancellation of the Williamson Act contract is impermissible except upon extremely stringent conditions." There's all kinds of numbers there for you lawyers. "The Attorney General has also appined that nonrenewal is the preferred contract termination method." There's more. You can read about it on here.
How much more?
One more quote.
Go ahead.
"If a landowner desires to change the use of his land under contract to uses other than agricultural production and compatible uses, the proper procedure is to give notices of nonrenewal pursuant to section 511245." It sounds to me, and Jill mentioned this, and she's so much more knowledgeable than I am, because I, again, have just arrived on the scene of Los Gatos.
Thank you.
That there's a lot to this Williamson Act.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hootis?
Do you have an opinion about the two-access versus the one-access?
I would prefer no access at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Jan Schwartz, and I live at 15966 Saravista Drive. So if you make a, if you go in Saravista Court and make a left, I'm actually on the sort of side street there. And my appeal is really, it's, we've heard it here a lot. It's a very rural area. I've been there since 1989. I've been in Los Gatos since '74. I lived farther up on Sioux View. And it's just a beautiful rural area. We have deer and coyote and owls that already are being squeezed, and this would be more. The hill is beautiful. To put another road up across that hill is, would just be devastating. I also, I'm not sure what the relationship of the homeowners association of the new homes would be to existing homeowners, because they will be traveling down our road, and I'm not sure what, say, we would have. That's just a question I have. Yes.
Question. Commissioner Hootis?
Two questions.
No access.
Is your street a public street, or is it a private road?
The Saravista Court where it comes in is, is a public street, but then my Saravista Drive is a private road.
And is that one that would be encountering public traffic?
No, well, we would on the bottom. And I do want to also second the, or third or fourth, the concern about traffic getting, coming off of Shannon Road onto Saravista. That is a very dangerous and busy area already.
And do you have an opinion about the two-access versus one?
I would prefer no access.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Ma'am, you brought up the dangerous intersection.
Yes.
Tell me specifically, it's been in other letters. What specifically, what streets are we referring to?
As you're exiting Saravista Drive, Court, Court, onto Shannon Road. Is that Drive? Okay, Drive, onto Shannon Road. You're on a corner, and the traffic is coming down the hill towards town. People come very quickly. I mean, my ex-husband actually was totaled in the car on that curve.
All right.
It's dangerous, and putting more traffic there is not going to help.
Thank you very much. Did I get that right? Greenfield.
I live at 140 Long Meadow Drive, and I just had a couple of comments. The first is, it seems like there's an opportunity for improvement to get the input from us, the neighbors, earlier. If we'd been asked to get it in yesterday as opposed to today, we would have been happy to get it in. You know, we'd have given you ample time to get, opportunity to read it in advance, so potential opportunity for improvement there. Unlike some of my neighbors, I'm not completely opposed to some building, and I think it would be helpful if the number of units was reduced. And if building's going to happen, ideally be when the Williamson Act expires, but if it's going to happen, fewer would be better than more. From my perspective, the big issues are noise, safety, and construction traffic in particular. And it does change the character of my street, the street of all my neighbors, and the resulting peace solitude. And I'm home a lot on weekends, not as much during the day, or during the weekday, but to have my weekends disrupted the same way would be frustrating and change the character. I certainly think that having preservation of open space is great, and that's what I appreciate about our neighborhood and the beauty, the solitude. And I think that it'd be a shame for that to disappear in a unidirectional manner where it could never come back. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Badami?
Mr. Greenfield, I did read your letter dated February 26th, receipt date of 11:34 PM. And you did talk about your preference for fewer lots and as to what you just communicated to us. So how many lots do you envision from a reduction of the 10?
Six would make me happier.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hootis?
Do you have an opinion about the two versus one access?
I'll be less politically correct than all of my neighbors. I love to share the pain across two different entrances and not have it all inflicted on one side. Obviously, both have problems.
Mr. Greenfield, your opening remarks were about notice, one or two days or something. That made me, that made me think. Have you or anyone you know been contacted by the developer regarding this project to discuss neighborhood input?
Only invitations to the town hall meetings that we've had over the last couple of years. I don't know whether those came from the builder, from the town hall, or from the Fordices, but that's the only input that I've gotten.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thanks.
Mark Weiner?
Surrey Farms neighborhood, Twin Oaks Drive, two doors down and across the street from the potential entry to that new neighborhood. I don't have a lot of prepared or written comments, just a few perspectives. I spent eight years myself on the general plan committee, working on the hillside plan and others. And a little perspective as well, from being a neighbor, not as long, but 18 years in the neighborhood, having walked the neighborhood with Mr. Dodge Senior from the photo. At least in my perspective, having been in Los Gatos most of my 52 years, about 49 of them, eight years on the committee here and working on the plan, having walked the neighborhood, walked that property many times with Mr. Dodge, I don't see that as the vision that we had in the general plan for how a layout like that would be in some of our remaining open hillsides. Personally, in walking with my kids, walking the area with Mr. Dodge, I never, at least, and obviously Bob would, or Tom would know better, I never saw that as the vision he had for the neighborhood in the time that he took me around the neighborhood and showed us around. And at least in my time being in Los Gatos again for a long time, that's not the vision, at least, that I'd heard in both growing up and, again, being involved in different groups here in volunteer town government as to what that plan should be. I think a lot of the folks here had brought up, it's going to have, it's going to, it's certainly not what many of us that came in the neighborhood, spending even 20 years ago, millions of dollars to buy in that neighborhood, people that have been there 30 and 40 years, I don't think it was any of their views that happened to know the Dodge family a lot better. Was never the plan to be it, or they wouldn't have purchased in the area either. I think it's a financial goal. It's an open capitalistic society, but it's a financial goal of certain people that own it now, but that wasn't the plan for 10, 20, 30, or 40 years, probably. Hence, all those coming in the neighborhood. So that's just my personal view from being here a long time and having been involved in writing some of the plans or updating some of the plans for the 2000 Plan Committee and being on that till 2005. Just my personal perspectives, not any quantitative or looking at the EIR.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hootis?
Two questions. Do you have a vision from your work on the hillside and general plan that this would be developed, that this, this property would, would in fact be developed?
That was not either my understanding, looking at it both as a resident or in my time in the committee. That was, that was, that had never come up, unfortunately, until Mr. Dodge passed, and there was a commercial aspect looking to it after that. I had never understood or seen it prior, and I was off the committee many years prior to Mr. Dodge Senior passing away.
And if I may, what was the mechanism for preventing any development on that property?
Well, that was the zoning in the Williams Act.
Okay. And the question is, do you have a preference on the two versus one access?
I think there's two different sets of answers here. Certainly, I think there shouldn't, either shouldn't be access, and I think, looking at it, if there's a reduced number of development, and I think perhaps there is a right to have and allow a development before I can predict, maybe it's three, maybe it's four properties, it's certainly not 10. If it's a limited number, perhaps cutting through our street, my street of Twin Oaks might be acceptable, but I think there should not in hell be any way for, I have 10 homes either way, and that'll, that'll mess up both neighborhoods. But there's probably a fair smaller number in there, is my practical view.
And the access would be from Twin Oaks only?
It was a much significantly reduced number, perhaps, if there has to be, but significantly reduced number of homes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further cards, going once, going twice. I'll now give the applicant up to five minutes to add any further comments about the application.
So either plan is acceptable to us. I don't mean to infer that we wouldn't accept the, the single-access plan. Either plan is acceptable. The alternate plan was developed as a response to the mitigation issues raised in the, in the EIR. It, it's very normal for Sequo processing to work on an alternate plan to address those issues. And this two-access plan does eliminate significant portions of the mitigation required. Also, cancellation of the Williamson Act is not unusual, and the town has canceled it as recently as the North 40 that, that was canceled. Resource conservation was placed on this property at the time that it was put into the Williamson contract, because the town had no other zoning or plan designation to put it in at that particular time. We are not disturbing the wetlands. It's about 365 square feet of wetlands at the very lowest portion of the, of the site against Hillbrook School, and we are actually boring underneath that a minimum of 30 inches to not disrupt the existing wetlands at that point. We're improving the trail, because the, the trail is a commitment to the county, and when Saravista subdivision went in, they were required to clear and improve the trail down to Shannon Road. A comment about the no light being on the property, the Fordices have a light at the gate that they put in to access the Dodge property at the rear of their property. And further, those abutting, the two abutting lots to our property, when they were developed, there was a very high berm that was put at the back of the property. And one property owner has kept that berm. The Fordices have removed that berm, and that was put there to keep any drainage from flowing onto their property when that subdivision was put in.
Are you finished?
Let me, let me, I have one, a couple more things here. The four-acre, let's see, what, construction has been going on nearly continuous since 1953. The last home on Twin Oaks was built in 1994, and the four homes at the end of Long Meadow were constructed after that. Remodeling projects are currently underway. We plan to work with staff on a construction mitigation traffic plan, and I want to also state that the four-acre open space preserves a significant, significant number of trees and provides shelter for animals on the property. Traffic addressed with recirculation of the EIR, the level of service at Shannon Road was, will, would not change with the four homes that are being proposed at that point. And I think.
Turn it over to me.
Yes.
Hi. Julie Houston with Berliner Cowan, speaking on behalf of the applicant. There were some comments about the notice and, and getting the, the attorney's letter from Mr. Mooney today at 4:00 PM. I'd just like to note for the record pursuant to the Fordice responses to the EIR, they put in a timeline. This attorney was involved since October 2014. So getting the letter today at the last minute, I, I don't understand, because we didn't get a chance to respond to it. But I will briefly respond to it. He makes some comments about the Williamson Act authorizes the approval of cancellation request only if it finds that the cancellation is not consistent with the purposes of the Act and it's in the public interest. That is not what we are coming forward with, with the, our nonrenewal. We're coming under 52, 51-282B. He's citing 51-282C. I have our response to our, our findings that were sent to the Department of Resources, and they concurred with our findings. The other issue I'd like to say is, under the SEQA guidelines 51092, the, you cannot reduce density for a housing project as a SEQA mitigation. So the attorney's letter was incorrect, and there was a statement tonight that was incorrect. That, that section says, "With respect to a, respect to a project that includes housing development, the public agency shall not reduce the proposed number of housing units as a mitigation measure if it determines there are other feasible mitigations." And I have, I can respond to some other comments, especially about the Saravista easement, because I, that dedication, I researched that as far back as 2014 for the town.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Your last comment was something that I'm interested in. You, you have read and studied that easement?
Yes, I have. And one of the speakers even referenced the Yarbofs, Yarbofs. They dedicated to the town that land, the property, to be used for a public thoroughfare and to become a portion of the public street system in the, in the town. And that was in March of 1973. This dedication was made, that it could be rejected, but at the option of the town, it could be accepted anytime in the future, and that's pursuant to the Subdivision Map Act. It's kind of counterintuitive. But I did research that, and it is a valid, it does show up on title reports, and it was a dedication for a public, public roadway. And I have these documents. I didn't make copies for everybody, but the, the recorded document says, "The property is so dedicated to be a public thoroughfare and to become a portion of the public street system in the town of Los Gatos." And that document was recorded in 1973.
Does it give the width of the roadway?
It's shown on a map.
Well, do you recall approximately the width?
Um--
Mr. Griffin can ask you, either one of you.
Yeah, I can.
It's, it's very wide. It's well over 100 feet.
The roadway?
No, the easement.
Okay, but the easement is for a roadway and other things?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm really wondering is, does it specify the width of the proposed roadway?
The proposed roadway is 24 feet.
Okay, thank you.
I have these documents, and I can provide them to the town. Do you have any other questions about the Williamson Act or the density?
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you for your comments. I just wanted to make sure I understood what you just said. So you were responding to the letters that were received today. All right, so the findings that we're being asked, and I, I actually have the, the, I got it from the, the Comfort Conservation Act website, but it's also in our packet, is that you're, that we're being asked to consider the findings under provision B.
Yes.
Right. And, and you're saying that they were looking at provision C?
C. There are two ways of canceling a, a Williamson Act contract. There's section C, and there's section B. And the ones that, we're coming under B, where a notice of non-renewal has been, you know, has been issued, and then you go through that, that process, and you make the certain findings, and there's a lot more findings. And in our letter, the letter from the town to the State Department of Resources, it listed all the findings, no proximate ag use, it's surrounded by urban uses, all those findings, and the state concurred and said, you, we'd made these findings. The state will be notified again before this goes to the town council, because they're, they will be the legislative body that will approve a tentative cancellation, and then from a tentative cancellation, it will go to become a cancellation if, if the conditions are met.
Can I just ask a clarifying question on what you just said? You said that the state made the findings for cancellation, but I, what I read, and maybe I heard it wrong, so tell me if I did, is that they said that they felt that the deciding body could make the findings, but they were not in a position to actually do that at the time. Right. And they wanted us to do it in conjunction with the other--
With the general plan amendment, yes, and the zoning, yes. If they, if they don't believe that it's going to meet these findings, they will, they will opine, and, and they will give conditions or let you know that they don't, they don't agree. So they said that based on the information submitted, it appears the town is able to make the required findings. However, the department recommends zoning and general plan amendment changes occur prior to at the same time. So that's what we're doing, because then that way, we are consistent with the general plan and the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the speaker. I'll hold my chief guard. Commissioner Genof.
Thank you. Just a clarification on the Williamson Act. Who owns the contract? So who, what are the parties to the contract, and who has the authority to cancel?
The property owner and the town are, are the, they're in the contract. And like any other contract, the parties can end the contract, but because it's a Williamson Act contract, it, it's an evergreen, it goes on and on, kind of like a, the ones you do for historic homes, a Mills Act, where they renew every year, the 10-year cycle keeps going. That's why you give notice to non-renewal. But the contract is between the town of Los Gatos and the property owner.
And are they equal parties to the contract, so that either the town or the property owner could issue a cancellation, or is it, is it the burden of the property owner, and does the town have that authority to also cancel?
The, the town, the council can--
You know, happily.
Yeah, they can, they can end the contract, but we can petition for a cancellation, and then the town, then we petitioned and we did that, and we also issued notice of non-renewal. So there's cancellation and there's non-renewal, so we're going both tracks. So we're requesting a tentative cancellation.
So along the, along the line of the non-renewal, which was initiated in 2015 and will automatically expire in 2025, is there any recourse for the town to step in to prevent that cancellation if the property owner has initiated that track?
No. And what happens with the notice of non-renewal, and when we start that path, what happens at the assessor's office, and I don't want to get into the weeds, but they start ramping up the assessments, so at the end of the 10-year period, you've paid the cancellation fee. A lot of people think it's a tax, but it's, it's a fee, but it goes to the assessor's office, so it's, it's a large, it's 12.5% of the value.
Thank you.
Commissioner Genof.
I have another question, not related to the Williamson Act, but for the applicant at that time. This is a question about the HOA. I'm not an HOA-involved person, so I don't truly understand how they work. My question is, if the HOA is responsible ultimately for the EIR mitigation responsibilities, how does that work when there's no property sold, or one property sold, or two properties sold? How, how do the mitigation acts get undertaken such that the preservation as recommended in those findings is--
The, the, the best way to handle that is, there are firms that specialize in management of the homeowners association, so that instead of it being managed by the residents of the project, who, or let me put it this way, they would be officers in the, in the association, but they, a firm would be hired to actually manage it and give them all the rules and laws and tell them what their, their obligations are along the way.
Excuse me, and just to follow up, if there are no homeowners yet, or there's only one, how does the full burden of the mitigation plan--
The property owner, whoever owns the property of, of those parcels, would be responsible.
That, that haven't been sold. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
That was my point.
All right. Commissioner Hootis?
I have some questions about the trees and the trees to be removed. I had a very, very difficult time mapping the trees to the plans. The, the, the schedule was illegible in tiny print, and it was very difficult. But I did find five trees from, from my walk and from blowing up the, the plans as much as I could, that I would ask to be considered for retention. And I can read those off to you now. Tree number 18, Coast Live Oak, 2016. Tree 62, Coast Live Oak. Actually, two trees, 302 and 303. And trees, actually, there's two here as well, 336 and 337. And tree 561. They looked like, all of these, again, I was difficult to place them, but it looked like they were on the edge of a road where potentially reorienting the road slightly might preserve the tree. But it was extremely difficult, because the Xs actually Xed out the tree numbers.
Some of the tree numbers, I, I concur with that.
So, I, I mean, I, I assume we're gonna get some of this back during the ANS if they do come to us, but they may not. And so I wonder if you'd consider retaining those particular trees?
I, I see no reason why we couldn't strive to save those trees with a reorientation of the road. I will take a better look at those particular trees. We do have to come back for a tentative map, and revisions to the roadway that we have on the site right now can be modified between now and the tentative map preparation.
Okay, I'll provide this to staff.
Thank you.
And maybe there would be a way for us to get a more legible tree inventory as well. And then with regard to Lot 7, that has a stand of, looks like aleppo pine and cedar that are very visible on the hill, that are pretty much all being removed. I guess, I don't know that much about aleppo pine, whether they are truly native, but they are distinct feature of that hill. And I was wondering if there was a way to potentially either recreate that with similar plantings, or to preserve there. There are a list of about, I don't know, 20 or 30 trees that have an X through them, that although they're not large, they're very visible when you look at that hill, and they're a very distinguishing feature of it.
Mr. Dodge planted those trees. They're not intrinsic to the site in, in the sense that they were not there before he bought the property. He put those in. And they're, they're in poor health for the most part, but I'm, I'm not an expert in this area, but it would seem to me that, in talking with the arborists, that we could probably save those trees. Our intention with the sighting of the building that we have on Lot Number 7 would not require grading in the vicinity of those trees.
Okay, and I guess my final comment, again, maybe to, to look at, is, you know, why not transplant more trees rather than, you know, cut down 71? You're transplanting some of them, but if it's feasible to transplant, you know, why not?
I, I think that transplanting would be our first choice in that matter. The arborist felt that the trees were of such size and health that they probably would not survive transplanting.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Genof.
Just a follow-up question on Site Number 7. I'm curious why the location of the home is behind that stand of trees, and many of, many of which need to be removed, and why not in front of that stand of trees? It seems to be that there's enough, enough space that's open, and judging from the topographical indicators, the slope is similar.
The, the location of, of the house that we have defined there is not specific to the only site that you could place on that, on the, that Lot Number 7. We were asked to indicate a space where a home could be built, that we could comply with the hillside ordinance, and that is where we placed that home. It was originally placed, that area was conceived by Mr. Dodge as, as the spot that he would like to build his home as well. And that's why he planted the trees.
So he's not in the picture anymore?
He's not in the picture anymore, so we don't have to keep it there.
And the other concern I have about its placement is that it creates an, an relatively long drive that would require cut and fill. Moving it forward, well, moving it, as I'm looking at the map, sort of north and west, would create the need for a shorter drive, and that might be more beneficial environmentally.
That's entirely possible. I, I concur. I think that building below those trees might entail some grading in the proximity of those trees, but transplanting or, and/or replacing those trees with something that, that, trees that are, could thrive, would probably be a better choice in that regard.
Just one more question. We don't have this in our package, and we, I don't recall ever getting this in our packages. But given that this is such a, it's such a dramatic change to the hillside, particularly as you refer from the residents, is it possible to create an elevation drawing of some sort that would show the, the slope rising up and the positioning of the homes as you're envisioning, so that we can have an understanding, sort of a more visual understanding of the actual impact of these homes in, in, on the view?
There are several sections that we've drawn through the site, which show the placement of homes on each of the lots that we took the sections through. And so are you saying something where we'd have an, an actual elevation of a particular home, or what we're showing is a section through showing where it's feasible to comply with the hillside standards and also put a home on that site?
Yeah. And I understand what you're talking about. You're talking about showing how the grading--
Right.
--is affected. My question is from, for example, from the end of Long Meadow, I believe, you're looking up that hillside to the very top. What, what the positioning of the homes, as you've described on this provisional map--
Yeah.
What does that look like? Where do we actually, what do we actually see as we're looking at that, what I call an elevation, which is ground to sky?
Okay, so basically, it would be a view from, say, Long Meadow to the site, what would you see? Of course, that could be done, yes.
I think that would give us a better understanding of the, the, the impact of these, these built homes on the view.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Griffin, I have a question for you. As soon as you're through talking. If this were approved, whether it's five lots, or 10 lots, or three lots, or whatever, you will have to come back for architectural site approval?
Correct. So each of those homes would have an individual approval before the town for any home that's constructed.
That would include the precise location of the home?
Exactly, on each parcel.
And it would also include the design of the home?
That's correct.
So if you don't have either, and you want to try to draw a map of what it's gonna look like, how do you do that?
It, it's still imaginary.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I wanted to ask another related question to what Commissioner Hootis brought up, and it was about the trees. The environmental impact report doesn't per se go into the trees. In the way that the tree analysis is normally done, and is apparently done in this case, is you make a proposal, and then the arborist makes a, an evaluation of what the impacts would be, given the proposal that you've made. So I, I, since we don't really have the concept of least restrictive development area for trees per se, is there a, a way that you could look at the placement of the roads and, and see, is there another way to save maybe a few more trees, not just on Lot 7, but at, you know, elsewhere in the property? Just because the number is so large, you know, with, with 30 plus 70 being removed, that's, you know, nearly a third of the trees.
Well, what you get into in, in building of a roadway, there are engineering requirements for the maximum slope, how it, how it works with the contours of the property, and radiuses for the, the turnaround as well. And so each of those come into play in that regard. We have looked at it from a standpoint to try and miss the, the largest number of trees that we could. There are some areas where we might be able to build a retaining wall to save some of these trees that are close proximity to the, to the roadway that I heard from earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hootis.
So I wanted to come back to the two-access versus one-access options. As I mentioned, it's unusual for us to have a proposed project, and then for the applicant to say that they prefer something other than what's been proposed. Could you walk us through your thinking on that? Particularly, I'd like to hear about the environmental impacts. I looked at the environmental impacts in the report. It looked like there were 63 significant impact, oh, I'm sorry, 63 impacts that may require mitigation, and that choosing the two-access-- mitigation, and that choosing the two-access alternative would eliminate 22 of those 63 over the proposed project, which is, you know, roughly 35 percent. So that looks to me like a significant environmental advantage of the two-access option. Are there other considerations and, you know, and maybe you could explain to me why the, why we're looking at a project where the preference is for something that is not the proposed project?
Okay, so when we first submitted the application, we submitted with one access. That's all we thought we had access for. It was during the process of developing the EIR that we did find through a title search for the adjacent property, we found the easement allowing public road access from Saravista. At that time, we also knew what had identified some of the requirements, the environmental requirements that required mitigation were known at that time, so the two-access site did, as you say, reduce significantly the number of areas that needed mitigation, the major one being the roadway no longer has to cross the riparian habitat area, and it doesn't, and it also reduces significantly the amount of fill, the height of the fill that's required to build the roadways for, on the hillside as well. And that's how we came up with that process.
And we also thought the swale was a wetland.
Yes, and, yeah. An amazing thing happened during the time we were in the process of doing the initial EIR and doing the responses, that we got the Army Corps of Engineers to actually come out to the property, and they found the wetlands down in the lower corner there. And so we then modified the plan to adapt and to be completely clear of the wetlands area there. So we felt that the two-access provided a diminished amount of traffic in the existing Saravista, I mean, the existing Twin Oaks and Surrey Farm, and the four homes added to Saravista were a small number of homes to ask to be put into that area, and the level of traffic service at Shannon Road would not increase.
So you are truly, it really doesn't make any difference to you which option is chosen? Or?
No, actually, we do not have a commitment to either one of those plans. We just feel that the two-access plan is superior because it raises and it has the least effect on the land.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Griffin, this may be our last chance to chat. I just want to make a recommendation shortly. You've heard comments regarding Number 7, and that that's something to keep in mind. It's a slippery slope. It's a steep slope, and the driveway is terribly long, and it's a lot of paving and asphalt, and I don't mean to be getting into A and S, but I think I can avoid pain if we try to pay attention in particular to the CDAC meeting of September 8, 2010. There were comments, about 15 bullets, and I don't know if you recall them off the top of your head, but they talked about the trees, they talked about developing at the bottom of the hills. Are we in fact offering an off-site BMP?
What we are offering is an in-lu fee for the BMPs.
So no structure, just money?
No structures, just money, and the reason being is that we felt that to obligate a BMP owner to maintain a one-acre site and commensurate with the other homes around it would be an unfair burden.
I didn't mean on that site, that the CDAC was talking about an off-site BMP and that that was acceptable, a structure somewhere else.
Well.
But you've already told me you're going to do the money.
I got you.
Okay. It talks about rural character to be maintained, it talks about architecture should be consistent with the neighborhood. It says not all the new homes should be two stories, and in the plans that I looked at, all of the potential hypothetical homes were two stories. Is that, is that going to be the intent?
The homes that are on the upper portion of the site are in fact considered that they would be two-story, or they would be at least accommodating the grades of the site to comply with the hillside standards, guidelines.
I think you just said they're all two stories.
I didn't say they're all two stories. I'm saying that the ones that we show on the upper elevations are, the sections that we have drawn demonstrate that there would be a level change, and it could be a two-story or it could be one-story with another portion of the plan farther up the hill.
Step down, step down the hill. Very good. As I said earlier, the CDAC said eight years ago, it'd be a very good idea to strongly meet early with the neighbors on their concerns. I would, I would take a look at those minutes from the CDAC meeting of September 8, 2010. Even then, they were talking about Lots 6 and 7 on slope, geotech, and visibility. And I would also look at the subjective passion of the general plan when it says how things should be and how things should be preserved in Los Gatos. Those would be good words to pay attention to as guidelines.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for the, Commissioner Hudes?
One more on the mitigation for biological resources, Measure 4.37B. This would be required mitigation, and there were three options that were suggested here. The way the report is written, or the way the ordinance is written, it would be Option 1, 2, or 3. I personally have a preference for preserving riparian corridors and preserving these environments rather than contributing to a bank that would occur somewhere else. Do you have a preference, or are you willing to commit to Option 2 or 3 rather than Option 1?
Yes, in fact, that is exactly why the two-access plan answers those questions. It completely preserves the habitat area. There is no intrusion into the habitat area. We have created a 10-foot setback from the habitat area, and everything is outside of that.
I understand that's for the two-access, but should the approval be for the one-access, then this mitigation would be required, and it would require a choice of one of these three options, I believe. And so do you have a preference?
The roadway crosses the upper portion of the riparian corridor area. We have pulled the trail, the trail does go around the perimeter of the habitat area, but the roadway crosses that, and what we had proposed to do was to build that as a type of a bridge through that area to have minimum effect on the riparian area.
Okay, well, if you have a preference, please express it, otherwise we'll take it up with staff, so.
I'm not sure if I understand what you're saying.
So on page 9 of 45 in the ordinance, it requires mitigation, and this is in the ordinance, which is Exhibit 15. And page 10, it outlines three options for mitigation. Which I would assume would apply if you went with the single entrance, although I'm not positive about that, but in any case, this mitigation would be required as the, as the project has been submitted. And so one of the options is for contributing to a mitigation bank. The other two options.
That's Option Number 1.
Right, and so what I'm asking is, would you be willing to go with Option 2 or 3 instead of 1?
I, yes, we would.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions for the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask any commissioners, no, I'm not, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.[1201.42]
Can we be seated? Having closed the public portion of the public hearing, I now turn to the commissioners, if they have any questions for staff wish to comment on the application or make a motion. Commissioner.
I have actually quite a few questions, but I'm just going to ask a couple for now. I'm going to switch to the general plan questions. Since we're being asked to approve a general plan amendment, and this is about changing from agricultural to residential designation, I wondered about the new housing laws in California that are encouraging any barriers to development to go away, to produce new housing. Does that apply here? I mean, I'm sure that their intent is probably more for affordable housing, but what do you know about the intent of these laws at this point? I know they're fairly new.
So, staff doesn't believe that those laws apply here because these are legislative acts with a zone change in the general plan amendment. That doesn't mean that future bills may try to plug that loophole, but currently, as it sits, the actual houses aren't before you currently. If something came through after approving these applications for houses, then we get into conversations about the bills that were recently adopted.
So, you're saying the state wouldn't take an interest in the fact that we're changing it from agricultural to residential?
Well, defer to the town attorney. I'm not sure what the state does or doesn't take interest in at this point, but it's possible, but I couldn't give you an answer on that.
I think Joel really hit it on nail on the head, is that it's legislative actions what you're doing. You're changing a general plan designation, and that's a legislative act. The Housing Accountability Act and all of those apply when it's already consistent. For example, if these lots, there were already 10 lots there, and they were trying to develop them into 10 homes, and it's already residential, you would not. It would comply with everything, and you'd have to approve that. But the legislative act doesn't apply, at least at this point in time, from the state level, but they might step in because of the housing, they perceive the housing crisis and try to change that. But right now, we don't see that because of the legislative acts that are needed first by canceling the Williamson Act and changing the general plan designation.
So, it's too early in the process, basically? Okay. A question about the, it said in the staff report, all of the Williamson Act contracts in the town were changed to a general plan designation of agricultural. So, my question is, why? Because clearly, the Act talked about agricultural as well as related open space, and, you know, when we have the zoning for resource conservation, so is it because we didn't have another general plan designation that was not open space? Like, why did we choose agricultural when it was never, at the time, it was taken under the contract, it wasn't, the orders were gone already? Why did we choose agricultural for all of them?
So, I can only point to the contract. Our contract, in this case, with the property owner from 1975, is for an agricultural preserve. It's not for an open space preserve. And the reason why, at that point in 1975, there was no such thing under the Williamson Act as an open space preserve. That occurred afterwards, when the Williamson Act wasn't being very well-used. They amended Article 13 of the Constitution to allow for open space preserves. So, this one is an agricultural preserve. It's not, and maybe at that time, when it was entered into, it might have been being used as an agricultural use, but it certainly is not now. And when we did those changes in designations, we would have looked at the actual contract and what it called out for, and not been able to put it into an open space preserve without amendment to the contract.
Do we have an alternate general plan designation that is somewhere in between public open space and agricultural? Not that we would choose, I just was curious, would that have even been an option?
There is now a designation for open space, and it's not necessarily public open space. In fact, I believe there was discussion from some of the neighbors of another Williamson Act contract nearby, just north of the property, and that does have, I believe, the general plan designation of open space rather than agriculture.
So, not all the Williamson contracts are designated agricultural in the general plan, then?
Correct.
Thank you.
The more recent ones, I believe, can have the open space designation.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
A follow-up on the Williamson Act. Had a fair amount of testimony, and we need to sort through that. One of the points that was raised by General Plan Committee member Jarvis a while ago was, what else has happened in town? And he asked specifically whether there were a couple of examples that could be used so we could understand whether there have been cancellations in town. Has this come up before? How has the town processed Williamson Act-related items?
Well, I would say that predates all of us. So, in the last seventeen and a half years, I don't recall one. The last one I know of was the Summer Hill Development off Blossom Hill, which is now Regent Drive. I believe that was either all or some of that was in a Williamson Act contract, and that cancellation was done prior to that plan development being approved. But I do not have the specifics on that.
And I don't, although there was testimony, I don't believe the North Forty had a Williamson Act cancellation.
So, we would need to go back to the Summer Hill Development to understand whether that was handled in a consistent way?
Well, I would say how it was handled then versus how it's handled now, I think, is irrelevant. We are following the proper procedures for this application and the cancellation, so we don't see that as an impediment.
Right, and the findings that are listed in your staff report for the required findings of the cancellation is directly out of the Government Code section of what you would need to find to cancel it. And the attorney spoke about the neighbor's attorney's letter that went in a great deal about having to make a finding of public interest, and he is misstating the law in that. That's a different code section, different requirements. It's not the cancellation that this applicant is asking for. So, the findings in your staff report are the ones that have to be found, and public interest is not one of them.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Since this came up, I was going to ask it later, but jumping ahead to the PD, since I was on the Plan Development Study Committee, I know we went through an exercise about it to look at a new ordinance which hasn't been approved yet. It's still being, it's under review by our commission as well as the town council. But we did go through the exercise of looking at any number of plan developments that had happened in the last five or 10 years, and we kind of looked at, is this what the town wanted, or is this what the town didn't want? And I remember that one particular development that came up that Marcia, Ms. Jensen, brought up, was that, that particular development. And what she said about it was this, she said it was a great example of partnership in that we were able to get a lot of open space in return for the development that was available to the public, and she thought that was one of the very best examples of a planned development. So, I don't know the particulars, though, of that particular planned development about what percentage of land they were willing to designate as open space, but I thought, since we're kind of in the same situation, precedent is a helpful thing to help guide us through it. If you knew that, I would like to know it.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have that information with us this evening.
Commissioner Badami.
I would just like to make the comment, and it's something that Ms. Quintana had cited previously, that this is a perfect example of where it makes sense to have an ANS application, accompany a PD application, so we know what we're getting, and we know what the ramifications are, because they can change depending upon the sighting of the house. That being said, with this PD application, with 10 lots, is that the maximum allowable density?
Under the proposed HR1 zone, the maximum allowed density, I believe, is 10.84. So, yes, 10 would be the maximum.
Okay, so this is maximum allowable density, and if there were fewer homes, it makes sense that, or it may not make sense, but would there be exceptions needed for cut-and-fill exceptions, a roadway outside of the LRDA, and homes built on 30-degree slopes?
It does appear that there would likely still be some roadway exceptions required, but it really does depend on which homes and what the redesign looked like. A significant amount of those exceptions for the cut-and-fill are reduced by the two-access alternative, and I'm not sure, you know, there would need to be further analysis to see what other impacts might be reduced.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
So, again, I'm raising the question about the two-access versus the one-access opportunities. It seems to be odd that we're, that the applicant is saying they would prefer something that's other than the proposed project. Could you maybe explain how we got to that point, and whether staff has an opinion about the two alternatives? And also, have the alternatives been studied equally in terms of the exceptions and the cut-and-fill, and the trees, and everything else?
Yeah, so this is a bit of an unusual situation in that the progress of the process, as we've gone through the staff analysis and the environmental impact report, has resulted in an alternative that really has taken care of a lot of the potential issues, and that the applicant really is very much in support of that. However, we are still looking at what was the originally proposed application, but as I said in my verbal report, staff is definitely in support of consideration of that two-access alternative, because it does reduce, even though the proposed project does not have any potential significant impacts that can't be mitigated, all of them can be mitigated for the potential, the proposed project, the potential impacts as well as the potential exceptions for the two-access alternative are reduced, and so staff would be supportive of that alternative.
So, has the two-access alternative been evaluated to the same degree that the proposed project has?
The two-access alternative, as you can see in your plans, does have the same level of detail in terms of the design by the applicant. It has been sufficiently reviewed in the environmental impact report so that it could be approved based on the current environmental document. And we have looked at the comparative exceptions in terms of the cut-and-fill depths and the details that are provided in the plans. Yes.
So, it has received equal consideration?
It has, yes.
Okay. And does staff have an opinion about it, given the environmental considerations and other considerations that were raised, both in writing and during testimony tonight?
As previously stated, we are in support of either of the options.
With no preference?
There are definitely positives for the two-access alternative in terms of reductions and impacts.
And I would just offer as well, I think if we would have had a conversation with the applicant, that they were really going down the path of the alternative rather than the proposed, we would have taken that into consideration and probably would have been before you requesting the two-alternative access. I think there are some comments in their letter of justification that could lead someone that way, but we never got that direct input that I'm aware of.
Right, thank you.
So, that I understand, does it matter? You know, we have four bullets to discuss, and earlier I said the fifth is Plan A or Plan B. Does it matter what they said initially as opposed to what they're saying now? It sounds a little bit like a bird-a-way, you know, boom, 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 and suddenly they like this one more than that one. And I'm okay with that.
You can proceed with either alternative. Adopting or recommending approval of the two-access alternative is actually one of the potential alternatives listed in our staff report, that you can move forward. The findings and conditions would all apply.
Thank you. Other question. Commissioner O'Donnell.
It appears to me that the two-access alternative is environmentally a better plan, and since we would have the ability to do either one, and since the applicant basically said they'd go with either one, but I understood them to say they agreed that two-access was better in that sense. The only way it's not better is that one has an impact on Saravista that the other does not. And now, that impact, obviously, if you live there, is a negative impact. It may be possible to say there's a positive aspect in that it divides the traffic up. If you go with 10, and you have four above, six below, obviously, that will ameliorate the traffic down below, but now, suddenly, you'll have traffic up above. So, that's got to be taken into consideration. But I think the testimony is that there is an easement there, and the easement is adequate for the purposes, and if anybody read the easement, it would say that it was for a roadway. So, those people who did not read the easement didn't see a roadway and said, I guess, there's no roadway. But all preliminary title reports and all final title reports reference easements, and you can obtain a copy, obviously, from the title company. So, I think this roadway was there for anyone who wanted to look. I don't blame anybody for not seeing it. That's a fairly, unless you're representing, I guess it's a fairly sophisticated question. I'm kind of curious as to, so personally, I think environmentally, the two-access is the better way to go. One of the things we have not talked much about is the 10 versus some other number. Obviously, if you have 17-point, whatever it is, acres, and you take three out of that, and you get 14, I guess, 14-point-something, I think, and divide that by 10, you have 1.4, if my math is correct, per lot, which is, I think, probably bigger than most of the houses in the area. We've already had testimonies, 12,000-square-foot lots, 10,000-square-foot lots down below. Up above, it was an acre, as I understand it. So, these lots are bigger than most of the immediate area down the hill, bigger than the only one we've heard about up the hill. So, the size is not particularly out of sync. Question, I guess, would be whether there's some environmental reason, or some other reason, why 10 should be cut down as opposed to arbitrarily doing so. So, I'm still waiting to hear, and I'm sure I will, some discussion on that.
I'd like to hitchhike on your point about Saravista. I didn't get up there, but I've read letters, and I've heard speakers talk about potential dangerous situations on Shannon, and I don't get out a lot. So, when I went up today, I went up Kennedy and made the left onto Long Meadow. There's a three- or four-way stop sign there now, and I don't think that, I don't think that's been there that long, because I used, or maybe I just drove through the stop sign. But when I went up there, I saw people on Long Meadow having trouble getting onto Kennedy, and the stop signs clearly have remedied that situation as long as you stopped. So, if we go forward with Plan B, the two alternatives, we should probably be thinking about asking staff to look into Shannon. A recommendation was made for a traffic light. The applicant may wish to assist, I don't know. But we should look at that traffic situation and see if we can do some mitigation on that traffic, stop signs or something like that. Seems to me, Plan B, if we go forward with it, makes more sense for a number of reasons, but I would also like to have, in the conditions, a consideration for doing something about the intersection with Shannon. Anyone else? Commissioner Badami.
Tagging on to what Commissioner O'Donnell said in regards to the number of lots, he's looking for discussion as to maybe reducing the number of lots and what justification we could use for that. Well, I'm going to refer to the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, where in Chapter Eight, it talks about subdivision and plan development projects, and it says, "Site constraints and implementation of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines may not allow a specific site to be developed to the maximum density allowed by the zoning ordinance." So, my concern with the 10 lots is you've got lots six and seven that are on slopes that are borderline 30 degrees. I have difficulty with some of these lots, where I don't know how you're going to mitigate privacy, or the fact that they're going to be very prominently visible to the Surrey Farms neighborhood. I don't know how you get around that, but I suppose that's something we would deal with, with an ANS application. But to me, being prominently visible, that, these are standards that are mandatory, non-discretionary items, so I'm having some difficulty with the intensity of the development being 10 lots.
And I think your points are well-taken, and I think the applicant is listening, because whatever we send forward, you know, the tapes of this meeting go with it, and I share your concerns with six and seven. I share your concerns with, we talk about preserving the view. Well, I don't know if that's entirely applicable here, but there is one house, doesn't matter which one it is, and it has a clear view of the hills, and they've enjoyed that for a long time, and there's going to be a house right here. So, intensity- So intensity, density, preservation of the views, maybe the size of the house could mitigate it, but these are things to put in the record as we go forward and look at the A&amp;Ss that we are concerned with, to the degree possible to minimize the impact on privacy, on location of the house further away from affected houses, and your thing about six and seven, I share. Yes, Commissioner Badami?
I would just like to add on, in addition to that document, we do have the general plan, and it's got some teeth here. So planning for neighborhood preservation and protection, it's one of the most important purposes of the town's general plan. So I look at that as well and the impact it's going to have on this neighborhood, because we're also talking about aesthetics, and I don't know how you mitigate some of these issues. It says there's no significant impact, and I believe that's somewhat a subjective finding that one might make. Am I correct in that, Mr. Paulson?
The no significant impacts is in regards to SEQA, and so the town's general plan and consideration of views and retention of the neighborhood character that you were discussing might be beyond what SEQA is looking at in terms of preservation of views.
Well, I'm also talking about 10 lots as opposed to fewer lots.
What do you mean by that?
That perhaps a plan development application asking for 10 lots might be too much.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson, you had your hand up?
I was going to take a little bit of a sidestep and talk a little bit about the EIR. I had a lot of concerns when I read the EIR, although I could see that everything was mitigated. I, in the case of the view, the thing, the way that the EIRs work is it says clearly in there that the, they only assess the aesthetics from the viewpoint of the general public, not from the viewpoint of individual property owners. And so then you're in the situation of where there's individual property owners that are, their view is going to be impacted because now they're looking at a big hill, and then they're going to be looking at a bunch of houses. So my thinking, if hopefully correct, is that the environmental impact report is only one part of the decision that we would make in our recommendation and that we would also look at the general plan, and as Commissioner Badami pointed out, we have lots of teeth in the general plan about views, you know, and we just had this in a hearing two weeks ago, that there's a lot of things about preserving neighborhoods, and it is all subjective about how you see it, but nonetheless, it is there in the general plan. And so getting on to the PD, though, I had some, I had some concerns because the PD does specify the number of lots, so I mean, if we get to the point where we could approve the other things and we were going to recommend approval of the PD, it currently says for 10 lots, so wouldn't we need to put our recommendation into that recommendation? Any feedback we have on what should constitute that PD, recognizing that there's also architecture in sight out there, but that doesn't affect the number of lots that go into it, nor some other conditions, which I'll bring up a little bit later.
I was wondering, as you and Commissioner Badami were speaking, and Commissioner O'Donnell, maybe you can help me with this. You know, we have five things to do. Should we focus on the provision that goes to lots, try to resolve that and move on, taking them one piece at a time?
If that was directed to me, and even if it were not, if you recognize me, I would not like to break it up. I mean, we could break it up if people, as we go, want to. We have some general questions that I think, personally, I think we're still talking about, and I would, I personally would not want to tick them off as we go down, because it's a little bit like this project. When they started, they thought of one access point, and as they learned, as they moved forward, they came up with another possibility. And I'm listening to everybody and thinking about this, because as I look at the five things, I think I'll be influenced as we go along. So I might say, okay, now we've taken care of point one, let's move on to two, but I don't want to be, say, oh, I can't go back to one when somebody says something that impacts that. So I agree with you that, to the extent that we want to make sure we hit each one of those, but I just would not want to think we precluded going back.
Yeah, I totally agree. That wasn't my intent. My intent was to perhaps get a tentative resolution to something and then move on to the others, because we need a map. We need a map and a guide. Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, while we're talking about the number of lots, maybe just on that topic, a couple of questions for staff. One of them is, you know, what prevents ever building on Lot B? What would prevent any, in the future, from ever applying to build on Lot B?
That's the open space. Okay.
If a requirement for open space easement were recorded on that land, then it would not be allowed to be built on in the future.
Is that part of the ordinance?
I'd have to confirm, but I believe so.
Okay.
And I would just offer that if it is not, it will be.
So we can come back to that. The other question related to number of lots would be, if we're looking at the proposal, and there have been questions raised about Lot Seven, Lot Six as well, but Seven, to me, is even more prominent and has more impacts, does staff have an opinion about Lot Seven if we were to take down the number of lots? Is that the right one to consider? Is that one we should consider?
Well, the commission can consider any of the lots they would like. If that is a specific lot that the commission wants to make part of their recommendation for removal, then that simply gets added to your motion for a recommendation to the town council.
And it should provide a basis so council can see where you connected that for the findings and the evidence, and I think Commissioner Badami was heading down that pass sighting to the LCP and to the Hillside Guidelines.
Further comment? Commissioner Hanson?
Since one of the things that we're being asked to do is to consider the plan development zoning as well, I wanted to ask about the findings for PD approval. I didn't see it in our list of findings, so, and I know we're operating under the current ordinance versus the one that's, we know we're discussing to change it to, and there was a lot of findings for that, but what are the findings for the PD?
So if you look at Attachment Five, the second bullet, it talks about the proposal to amend the general plan designation and rezone the property is consistent with the general plan. That's the finding that needs to be made for the plan development.
So that, so we're not looking at the terms and conditions of the plan development at this time? We're basically just looking at the zoning, per se? So at what point, if that's correct, is that correct?
No, you do have the PD ordinance before you with its development standards in, within that, as performance standards, and so that is part of what you're considering, but the finding that you need to make is that it is consistent with the general plan as described in Exhibit Five.
Okay, so, but in addition to that, then we would also have the ability to look at some of the terms and conditions in the PD as well as the number of lots?
Absolutely. Additional conditions, or in this case, its performance standards, could be added to that PD ordinance in your recommendation to town council.
Because, so just to kind of like state where we are in this thing, I mean, if there is development, it has to be a PD because of the way that our code is written right now, because it's more than five lots and it's in the Hillside, so
Correct.
It's a sort of a non-decision about whether it's a PD or whether they would use the Hillside Design Standards and Guidelines.
Correct.
And, but we could incorporate some of those ideas. So I had a sort of related question, sort of comment. In looking back at the EIR, one of the things I noted, there's all kinds of potential biological impacts and wildlife impacts and whatnot, and I know some of the residents did comment that, you know, the mitigations are, and this is standard in EIRs because we've seen them before, but the mitigation is sort of like if they find anybody nesting in a particular tree, then they have to take these mitigation things, but the big picture of the thing is that you, this is currently a big wildlife corridor, and when we were talking about the potential changes to the fence ordinance, we had all kinds of testimony from, you know, environmental people and stuff about how, you know, we need to make it so that wildlife can pass through and all that stuff, so I don't know that the mitigations really encompass that, because they only look at if they happen to find something there. So then there's this whole issue of that, where does all this, where does all this wildlife go? I know there's going to be some open space, but now they're going to have, you know, maybe four acres instead of 18, and you know, and what happens to them? So then it made me think again about PD conditions, and, you know, we're not at the point of seeing architecture in sight, but, you know, one thing that comes to mind when people are going to go build big houses and everything, and they want to put big fences around them, and, you know, we don't have, we have some guidelines in the Hillside Design Standards and Guidelines, but they're not really code, per se. So is it possible to add some conditions, you know, because the PD in the past had often been thought of as a way to relax some of the standards to get what the applicant wanted, and maybe, you know, this is also an opportunity to do what the express purpose of the, even the current ordinance is, which is to preserve and maximize open space, and so that would include things like, you know, how much fencing they're allowed to have and so on and so forth, and since they're not operating under our other codes, it should be in the PD. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Genov?
Yeah, I think for me, there are enough questions regarding the plan development as proposed, having to do with how many lots, the views, fencing, and what my fellow commissioners have already mentioned, that it would be difficult for me, I think, at this time to approve that plan development as is, when we have the opportunity or might have the opportunity to make refinements that they could satisfy, better satisfy the residents as well as the developers. One thing that occurs to me is that there may be an easement at Saravista, but does the EIR need to be revisited with regard to traffic? I did go to the upper part of the property along Saravista Drive and Saravista Circle, and it's not fun getting out there on Shannon, and I was there, let's see, maybe 10 o'clock in the morning, so I can imagine when there's a lot more traffic. So I have a question about whether there might need to be an additional traffic impact analysis. Should that, that, that two-access be the direction we want to go?
No, no additional analysis would be necessary. If you do take a look at the alternatives analysis within the EIR, it does actually go into some detail for traffic and a number of other items for that alternative, so it is fully reviewed and examined as far as requirements for SEQA.
Okay, so then, you know, we're back at that point of what the residents say versus what the analysis says. The other thing, I think, as far back as 2010, when the CDAC reviewed the project, and we're talking about Lots Six and Seven, there were issues with regarding that, the impact on the view. If the developer or the property owner were willing to consider a realignment of the boundary lines to accommodate fewer lots, there might also be a way to incorporate a street that doesn't go through, that is in the LRDA, that accommodates maybe seven or eight lots rather than all 10. I think the problem that we have with the encroaching on the, in the protected areas is because of the number of lots proposed. So reducing the number of lots gives us the opportunity to look at more creative ways to route that street, that also would have a similarly less environmental impact as the two-street access. Also, it seems clear to me, from visiting the site from both ends, is that with all due respect to the beautiful neighborhood at Twin Oaks and Long Meadow, those lanes seem to be able to accommodate traffic much more than the Saravista Drive. I mean, there's just wider streets, longer, longer streets. So I'm a little bit concerned with that second access because of that impact on those properties up on Saravista. So again, I'm just wondering if we could have asked the developer to go back and do a little bit more work on the PD concepts, take a look at reducing the number of sites, citing them, even though my request for an elevation of the hill is as fictitional as not, if we know generally where the developer wants to place those pads, we know generally there are going to be one-story or two-story houses, we can pretty much figure out, I mean, I could take the photographs and probably plot those according to the topographical lines, which I'm not going to do, but it's possible to do, and we'd have a much better sense of what that visual impact is. So for me, I'd like to see more detail on the plan development project.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't want to go back to the drawing board. I think we have enough here that if we feel, for example, that 10 is too many, we can make it less. However, I don't, you know, this is a fairly complex situation, and we can do this for a long time, going back and forth, and I'm not sure that benefits anybody. I was looking for something concrete. We've had a couple of the lots particularly singled out, Seven, for example. I would personally like to see, there was some additions, if people want to put additions to the conditions, to do it now. If people want to reduce the number of lots from 10 to, let's say, eight, I'm not arguing for that, I'm saying if that's what people want, they could recommend that too, but to say, go back to the drawing board essentially and try to figure out what we're all saying here, because we're not all saying the same thing, I think would be unfair to the applicant without being a benefit to those people who are protesting. So I just throw that out, not because I disagree with the sentiment of it, but I would hope that this evening we could come up with something more concrete on our recommendations to the council. Maybe we won't be able to, but that, I just wanted to say that because I feel some responsibility, if we can, to move this along. This started in 2010, I guess it was. It hasn't exactly raced down the track. It's now 2018. It might be fair to everybody concerned to bring some, well, we can only recommend, the council will do whatever the council does, but I would recommend that we move it along to the council if at all possible.
I have a comment from the town attorney.
Just to re-comment about the difference, and many times you do continue to go back to the applicant to revise their plans, and that's usually done when you're the final deciding body and you're going to be making a final decision on that. In this case, it is just as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, you're making recommendations, and those recommendations are not only the council, but they're actually towards the applicant too, and has that ability to make changes before it gets to council, along the lines of any recommendations that you make, to changes to the PD ordinance or to the, and so will staff, listen to those same recommendations if in fact there's requirements that you want to put into the PD ordinance that have been missed either by staff or need to be revised, so. Staff thinks the better alternative is to make those recommendations and to move it on to council.
This might help and it might not, so I'll throw it out. I could make a motion, dealing with the five points we have, with the idea being that it is a tree upon which you can hang your ornaments, but if we don't have the tree, then it's difficult to do that. We have to make the findings, recommend the findings, I guess, of all five, or we recommend, I guess, denial. I think we can make the findings, however, people may say, well, that's fine, but I think it would be better if we did X, Y, or Z, and we can see what the majority then feel like. So at the end of the day, we'd have a motion tuned by the majority of the planning commission, if that would be helpful. So I throw that out as a possibility. If it is deemed to be helpful, I would make the motion, and then I would ask if there's a second, but I would look for people to make suggestions on how we could change that.
That's pretty much what I tried to say earlier, but you said it better. Commissioner Hootis?
I mean, I agree that we're going to
I mean, I, I agree that, um, we're going to do something that's not perfect, that we are going to need to make, um, a recommendation that, uh, you know, gives direction, and, and it's important for us not to go back to the drawing board, um, particularly since, uh, there, you know, been a number of items of concurrence in agreement. My concern about doing that tonight is that we're being asked to make a recommendation between two alternatives that I don't think have been given equal weight, either in the way they've been analyzed or in the way the public has been noticed about it. I don't think the public was aware, um, that, you know, the, the alternative to, the two-access alternative was the preference. I think it was one of two alternatives, and you'd have to go into the details of the EIR to tally up the differences and then to, to have the testimony come out. So prior to this meeting, I don't think it was clear to the public. It wasn't clear to me in reading the report, and I'm not even sure if it was clear to staff that the two-access alternative was preferred for many reasons, although there, there are other reasons why it's not. So I would prefer to act on a recommendation of motion that's written up around the preferred alternative, um, from staff that incorporates and eliminates those items that aren't going to be necessary in terms of the mitigation of the, um, you know, of, of the, the water and the riparian space. Um, and there are some other items as well that I would like to see, you know, written up as part of what would be approved. So my preference would be to look at this as with, with a staff recommendation, um, along the lines of something that is, uh, you know, makes much more sense in terms of making a recommendation for, um, a preferred alternative.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was fairly clear to me that the preferred, uh, path was the one that was called the preferred path in the EIR. Uh, it is clear that the applicant says, we don't care which way you do it, so we're not being inconvenienced there. Uh, but I, again, I don't know what is missing in all the papers we've been handled to prevent the evaluation. Now, a- as far as the public's viewing of this, I would grant you that reviewing 10 years or eight years worth of stuff was very hard for me, and I have easier access, I think, to it. But we have not heard anybody complain about not getting to the documents. You're saying, I think, that you don't find it clear. I disagree. Well, I don't disagree with you not finding it clear, but I think I find it clear. Um, and I, if you make the motion, for example, and you say, uh, alternative two, which is the, the two thing, it automatically has said, you're not going to need the same excavation, you're not going to need, uh, the same, um, building up. It, it says the things you won't need. Now, if there's something else missing on that, uh, then which is possible, but I can't think of it at the moment.
Let me interrupt and look to, uh, Mr. Paulson for any direction.
Thank you. So I, I think, you know, should the two-access alternative be chosen? As a matter of course, staff would go through and make sure that those modifications are made. That would be, um, standard operating procedure from planning commission to council. If there are, as Mr. Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, um, additional items you want to make sure that we address, then please, um, let staff know that. But, um, staff does not believe that there's a need to continue it to modify conditions.
Commissioner Hanson.
So, um, the thing that occurred to me, um, though, is that, uh, supposing that our, um, our recommendation to council is for, um, a reduced number of units, the place to reduce them would be on the, you know, upper portion, likely lot seven or others. And, and then that being the case, then would the two-access alternative even make sense if you only had two houses up there? Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, but I, I think that's a question you have to ask. So I, I, that's, uh, that's where I'm kind of with, um, Commissioner Hudes on this. I, I, I'm not sure that the PD is baked enough. I mean, is it an option to, is it an option to just approve the, um, an HR1 designation and then have the PD be evaluated as a separate item?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
The reason for using the two-access thing was not nearly, it was not merely the number of lots. It was to avoid all the work you had to do with environmentally sensitive areas. And whether you have two lots up there or four lots up there, you get the same benefit. If you have one lot up there, you get the same benefit. So I don't know what you go back to the drawing board on that for, because what, why are you doing it? You're doing it to get that environmental benefit. Now, if somebody said, I don't think we should do that, that's fine, that's a fair position. But it's absolutely clear to me that whether you have four up there or two, you're going to get the benefit that we've all talked about and is crystal clear in the papers we've read.
Commissioner Hanson.
Well, I, I, I hear everything you said. What if there, with two units, they were, they could reroute the original road away from the riparian area? I, I don't know, uh, because I, you know, I'm not, we're not designing this thing, but I'm, I'm just saying there's that possibility out there, and that, that was the question I had. But I agree with you that the benefits of, the environmental benefits of the two-access alternative are clear, and there's no question about that.
As I read the EIR, Plan B, um, eliminates the necessity to build a road over the, the culvert or the tunnel. And they use the word daylight, that they would daylight the tunnel. That's worth keeping in mind. I asked staff, does that literally mean what I think it means? Digging up the tunnel and exposing it, and then they have a creek running, a creek run through, runs, a stream runs through it. So I find a lot of merit to that proposal too, but I'd, I'd like to see if we can spot a finish line from here. How do we proceed? Commissioner O'Donnell, you have a way of figuring these things out.
I'm not sure I'm going to get a second, but I, I'm going to make a motion, and we'll see where we go. If I don't get a second, that'll take care of that. So I, I will make a motion that we recommend, uh, to the council, uh, approval of the proposal. Uh, and we, we make the required findings for SEQA, that, um, the planning commission recommends certification of the EIR, making findings a fact, and recommends adoption of mitigation monitoring and reporting program. As far as consistency with the town's general plan, that the proposal to amend the general plan designation and rezone the property is consistent with the general plan and its elements, in that the proposed hillside residential zoning and plan development overlay allow residential use consistent with the adjacent property zoning districts. The required compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines, the project is in compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines, with the exception of cut and fills. Now, that would be different, because that would have to be rewritten, because we go, and I guess I should have said that to begin with, this motion would be for the approval of the second alternative and not the first alternative. And if that were the case, I don't know, and you can tell us later, uh, but I'll just wave that flag at this one. What this is telling me here is, the project is in compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines, with the exception of cut and fill depths for the roadway and future driveways, which have been determined to be acceptable. Now, that, that may, perhaps should be flagged. Uh, compliance with the hillside specific plan, the project is in compliance with the hillside specific plan, in that the proposal is the development of the, of the lot for 10 single-family residences, that may change, with associated site elements on an existing parcel. The proposal is consistent with the development criteria included in the plan. Uh, and then on required consistency with the town's housing element, the project is consistent with the town's housing element and addresses the town's housing needs as identified in the housing element. We also have to make findings for the cancellation of the Williamson Act contract. Those, uh, reasons are set forth on page two of exhibit, or attachment five, which I will try not to read into the record. I'll just say that those are they, and that's one, two, three, four. That's, uh, the five highlighted points which you all have before you. So that would be the motion, and as I say, I, I'm assuming that we would proffer some amendments to it, but I think we need a second if that's going to be possible.
What am I raising my hand for?
The only one I don't believe I heard was the recommendation also that adopt the plan development ordinance. Did you incorporate that one into it?
I, I, I defer to your conferees over here. They told me I didn't need to do that.
It, it was part of the, the general plan, and the PD were within one finding.
So, Commissioner O'Donnell, when we, um, agree to certify the EIR, is that the place to add an asterisk on all of the tree work that Commissioner Hudes did?
No, because the EIR is either going to be certified or it isn't going to be certified. The tree work, I think, would come under the, uh, plan development, and, so, but it wouldn't come under the EIR.
That's answered. Now, when you talk about, I'm, I'm working on that. When you talk about the plan development as consistent with the general plan, where would Commissioner Badami's current concerns be voiced?
She could, if we get a second, then people can have at it, and they can say, uh, I, you know, I agree with the motion, except that I think we should do A, B, and C, and we can consider all those things. And so at the end of the day, we may have a motion which is substantially different, or at least more detailed than this motion I just, I'm making.
I second the motion.
Okay.
And, and I'd, I'd like to have Commissioner Hudes talk about trees to get that in there, Commissioner Badami to put her remarks about the general plan, and, um, perhaps Commissioner Genov to talk about the number of lots. I don't know where we put all those pieces under which one of these headings, but I second your motion. Comment. Commissioner Hudes.
Trees. Um, I don't feel that I have sufficient information to be comprehensive on that because the plan I was presented with was illegible, and, um, I would offer my notes to staff
Yeah.
to consider, but, um, I, I think there's work that needs to be done on trees that needs to be, um, reviewed carefully before it goes to council.
You talked to the applicant and gave him specific numbers, which he wrote down. Are your concerns beyond that?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, and the reason that they go beyond that is that that was based on the, uh, on the proposed project, not on alternative, uh, the two-access alternative. The two-access alternative was noted with some yellow shadings. It wasn't clear which trees would be, um, would be destroyed and which ones would be preserved under the two-
Let me ask this. Uh, if we make a motion and we attempt to, uh, change it as best we can, and we simply say, we would like to have the draft prepared and returned to us, so that we can then go over the draft.
Bingo.
And if you want to ask for anything specific like you're asking for right now, then it would, I, I would like to have something to work with, but I agree with you that maybe we need some time, plus looking at the draft, so that when we finally do make, make the recommendation, it should be very helpful to the council for us to do that, and clearly it will be helpful for us to know what we're doing. But I, I had this feeling that if you have a draft, it's easier to work from a draft than to work from discussion.
I would be very comfortable with that. I have some other items that I would suggest, um, in that draft. One would be, uh, to address whether that mitigation is required where there were three options, and if it's not required, then fine, it goes out the window. But if it is still required, that we limit it to option two or three, not one, which is the bank.
Is this the riparian corridor?
Yes.
With Plan B, we don't need those.
Well, it's actually, it's not referred to as the riparian corridor. It's referred to- Yes.
So I do believe that the two-access alternative does accomplish, um, the second alternative, that it avoids those riparian areas, and so by that design, it's actually already meeting that mitigation measure.
Okay. Um, the other one I have is a concern that I raised about access to the open space, given that the trail appears to have to, to cross a driveway. And so I want to make sure that in, um, the, in the PD, that proper access is given to the public to open space, um, both at the top of the hill and, um, because it does appear that that road is short. So that would be another item that I would ask to be
That can be added.
included. And if I may, one more item would be, um, for staff to look at the traffic flow, um, not a TIA, but to look at the safety and other concerns that were raised about, uh, whether the access to Shannon is adequate or is dangerous, as I don't think that was analyzed, um, in the same way. So those are items that occur to me to be, to be added.
So those could all be added to the motion and, and go as recommendations to council and wouldn't need to come be, come back to this board?
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Well, it was, until our council spoke. It is my clear, uh, understanding at the moment that it's, that this is going to come back to us because we're not going to finish tonight. Uh, what I'm coming up with here is, we're trying to come up with the best draft we can.
Hold to turn on my mic. Sorry, thank you.
All of that was lost.
Good. Um, so what we're trying to do is, I don't think this commission is ready at this moment to, to make a final motion. I am trying to give us the framework of a motion. It is not now intended to go to the, to the council. But I would like to say our, our next meeting or whenever we can do this, it comes back to us, and, and prior to that meeting, and people can decide precisely what they would like to do with it, because eventually we've got to do something.
Staff wants to make an input.
Well, we have a motion and a second, so that can be withdrawn, and then you would be making a motion to continue it with direction.
Well, that, yes, I agree, but first, I, that's what we could do. The moment we have a motion and a second before us, we're trying to get as much flesh on it at the moment as we can. If it appears that we can't get enough flesh on it, which I don't think we will, then I think what we can do is to say, the, the other, which is to say, do the draft, bring it back to us, and we, we will draw the motion effectiveness tonight.
I'm concerned that staff has concerns that, that I don't understand. Maybe they have a different perspective, but if, if they're willing to share them and get us out of a box and avoid the continuance, I'd appreciate it.
No, there's a motion and a second on the floor, and so where I was getting concerned about is what Commissioner Hudes was bringing up, are, are three conditions that can be put into your recommendations and it can move forward. It, there's nothing that's going to be any different when that comes back at your next hearing. Now, if there's something you absolutely need in a continuous-
Well, she just told us we wouldn't need those three conditions, period.
Well, one of them, the other two, but making certain that that condition is not needed. Um, but, so wherever you want to go with it, but there is a motion to make those recommendations.
We're not going to vote on the motion unless the, unless the commission is changing their mind. I, maybe I'm misreading the commission, but I think the commission needs more time.
And, and I'm picking up the vibe from staff that that's not necessarily the best way to go.
But the staff doesn't have to make the decision.
No, I'm not saying which is the best way to go. I'm saying there's a motion on the floor for those five recommendations, and you're adding things to those motions right now. So are the, are the items that Commissioner Hudes has offered as amendments to the, are those acceptable to the motion maker?
My problem at the moment is, he was concerned about three things, and had a recommendation as to item two and three. As I understand, uh, from Jennifer, she said, we're already covered on that because, what was the answer?
So his concern was, uh, whether the, um, avoidance of the riparian zone, um, would be effective in the two-access alternative, and, um, that is the, the main purpose of that two-access alternative. So it would not need to be paying into a bank in some other location, but would be done on-site.
Commissioner Hudes.
I, I understand this is very unusual, what we're doing, but I'm just trying to come up with something that can move this along. I, I agree with council to say, well, wait a minute, you've got a motion and a second. What are you going to do with it? Give me a chance. I'll do something with it.
Yeah, so to, to reiterate, I had, um, four concerns. One of them has been eliminated by staff's response. One of them, I'm not sure can be, uh, well incorporated into the current motion, and that's on the trees, because I want to know specifically which trees are going to be saved and which ones are going to be destroyed. And, um, I'm uncomfortable with leaving that up to, you know, the developer to, to, to take- And I'm uncomfortable with leaving that up to, you know, the developer to, to, to take the lead on that, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell, do you want to respond?
Well, trying to, yes, I can respond. I'm not sure that's, if I were the developer and I heard what Commissioner Hudes is saying, I would want to submit something to us prior to the next meeting where that person, having identified the trees you're talking about, and you having been provided with something you can read, you'd have that before you too. And then if you had to tweak it, you could do that. So I think it's, personally, I think what we're doing now can be very beneficial because you're identifying things we can clear up.
Yes. And I, so I would be a strong proponent of seeing a draft of this with some of this addressed before voting on it.
Or that, or that could be incorporated into your motion for the recommendation that, that that plan be provided to council so that they can see how many trees are going to be removed.
Yes. Yeah. Good. I think that's what you said.
Commissioner Badami, did you want to take your, take your subjectivity with teeth and get it into one of the points?
Well, I didn't have my hand up, but now we're going to get into the, the question of how many lots are appropriate. And I think that's something that we might not get unanimous number on.
That will be easy to deal with, I think, because that's just a number. And I, I don't mean that the way it sounds. But what I'm saying is, if we continue this essentially, and what, the only thing we had to discuss was whether there were going to be 10 lots, or eight lots, or nine lots, or whatever it is, that's very defined, and I think we can find out the opinion of this commission fairly easily. The other things that are being talked about, such as the trees, are much more sophisticated and probably need some more input.
Commissioner Badami?
This may be a question for staff, but typically, when we have an application before us with an EIR, we approve them hand in hand. And if we have an application that might change, I'm reluctant to certify an EIR because I don't know what the end result's going to be. So typically, it goes hand in hand.
So another reason you'd like to see, to see the sketch, to see the draft?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Janoff, you had your hand up. Only two proposals.
Yeah. If I, if I think through what Commissioner Hudes is asking for and Commissioner Badami, and if there are other commissioners like myself who might be in favor of reducing the number from 10 to eight, then that impacts the trees. It impacts the road. It impacts things that it may not make sense for us to be digging into further detail because it may change. I would propose that we, we, in section three, item two of the ordinance, we, we provide a number that is not 10, but it's, I'm proposing eight market rate, single-family residences. And that somewhere in the ordinance, we also say that it, that there has to be, with respect to the views, preserving the views, preserving the open space as it was, and also preserving the trees, and also not impacting the riparian area and staying within the LRDA with regard to street pavement and that sort of thing. I, I think if they, if the, if the number of homes is reduced at all, then all of those things are impacted. And so, asking for more detail about what may not be in the end is, is a fruitless endeavor. So that would be my recommendation.
And where would we put that? Is that to be added to the, to the motion?
Chair, I would just offer, I'm hearing from at least three commissioners so far that they're going down the continuance path, which may be where Commissioner O'Donnell ultimately gets with his current motion. That's not how it's stated currently, but, so I think that's kind of the exploration. I think Commissioner O'Donnell's intent, and I don't want to put words in his mouth because that's not safe for me or him, but I think we want to go through these topics, get them out on the table, and then that motion potentially gets converted into a continuance with direction, and that direction becomes the direction from the former motion.
Can we do that now?
You, you can, but that's up to the maker and the seconder.
Why don't we do that now and the road becomes more clear?
Wait a minute, I'm not sure what "do that now" means.
He's saying we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
And unless we revise the motion to request a continuance, we can't get there from here. So I think it's a simple adjustment.
I don't think anything's simple about it, but, I mean, I've heard serious questions by Commissioner Hudes that can only be answered by further detail, I think, and perhaps a suggestion by the applicant. I've heard serious questions about whether there should be eight lots rather than 10. And that, of course, will have the possible ramifications that you've suggested, that is to say. Well, which eight? And now, it may be that if two were taken out, it would solve, I'm not saying it does, it might solve some problems. But again, we need that input. If you just simply say, we want eight lots, not 10, that doesn't tell you much. And it doesn't tell you which eight you want. So it's clear to me that there is not enough information at the moment to make an intelligent motion. That's why, even though we have a motion and a second, I will ask the seconder shortly if, if I withdraw the motion, although I don't know if I can withdraw it or we have to vote it down, I forget. The council will tell me. But I just, what I'm trying to get done today is, as much as possible, and I think we're making progress, because people are saying things that are important, but I think if they can crystallize them, then we can get this thing moved along so that at the end of the day, at the next meeting, you know, we may have enough detail. Not everybody will agree, but if four people agree, you've got the motion passed.
And that means we need a continuance.
But first, we have to finish this discussion. Continuance by itself doesn't do anything for you.
A continuance by itself doesn't do anything. A continuance to reduce the project to eight, seven, six lots, and ask the applicant to revise his project is not an option. You are making recommendations. You can certainly say, reduce it to eight lots, seven lots, six lots, and that's part of your recommendation that goes forward to council. So if you want plans to be revised by applicant because you're not the final deciding body, that's not an, that's not an option. As far as SEQA, you can't tie SEQA to a less-density project. You're actually tying it to your LCP policy. So you're not looking at impacts. And in fact, I've never seen a project where you reduce the density increases impacts. And in this case, all impacts have already been, for a 10 lot, have already been reduced to less than significant. So there isn't any change in, in SEQA document. So still in my mind, everything you have discussed could be placed in a recommendation. If you're not there yet, then let's do a continuance and ask what you still need. The only thing I've heard that truly can be done is, what do you need further for that alternative project? And I've heard you need the landscape, the number of exact trees from, from the, from the alternative project that will be removed. That's, that's all I've heard that still needs to be developed, and that could be asked of the applicant.
Let me ask, let me ask this, because I, everything you said sounds logical to me. The question, I guess, would be Commissioner Hudes, for example, and just one example, is, has a particular interest in the trees. If one simply, if one is doing this recommendation, and in the recommendation it said, too many trees are being removed and that should be changed, I, I thought it would be something we could help the council with. I think you're, if I understand you correctly, it's like, no.
No, you, that was, that was the one that you could request, is to see the, he, he said he was not able to read it and understand it. And, and I believe the applicant said he could provide that. If that is instrumental to your decision-making process, to make a recommendation, you can do the continuance for that. But I've heard quite a bit on, I don't, I don't know whether it's six, I don't know whether it's seven, I don't want eight, and then I want the applicant to provide us with additional plans to do that. And that's not an acceptable continuance.
Okay. The other question I have.
Hang on. Commissioner Janoff?
I just wanted to be clear. I'm not, in, in the recommendations that I made, I'm not asking to see more plans. I'm suggesting that we, we actually vote on this motion, we keep it intact, we send it to council, and we say, we say eight homes, trees preserved, and, and all of the things that we're saying as recommendations for what then comes back to us in, in the form of a more, presumably, we're going to see it with ANS, a more defined application. So I, I just, I just really think, looking in more detail at something that isn't going to be what we see when we get to that point is, is, is not.
And your, and your recommendation on homes, it could go as far as pointing out ones that you think might be the best alternative based on your limited knowledge. You heard about six and seven. But your recommendation could be based on that, so council knows there are suggestions. But because we didn't have the exact plan in front of us, that might not be the best option.
Good. Commissioner Hanson?
I, I'm in the same position as Commissioner Janoff. I, I, I feel like we can actually make a decision tonight because we're only making a recommendation. And so, we have the opportunity to add whatever items of consideration we want to, recommended terms and conditions, or other things that the council should look at. So unless we don't even know what they are, I don't know what we would do by continuing it, since we're only making a recommendation. And, and having, but having said that, I mean, if we do get on this path, I do have a, at least three or four things for the terms and conditions of the PD ordinance that I would recommend. So, but I don't know where, where everyone else is.
What are they? Let's see if we can get them in the motion.
Well, I, I mentioned earlier, I, I think we, we talked about this earlier. The, I, I just went through, and while we were talking and reread the ordinance, I didn't see anything about the, a public access easement for the open space. And I think that's essential to have in the, you know, since our goal is to preserve open space, I think that's essential to have in the PD ordinance itself. This might be a little far out there, but I, I wondered about, since the applicant has been gracious to offer this trail, is there an option of putting some of the trail actually into the open space? It looks like there's not as much trees and stuff that, but maybe to increase the amount of trail. I didn't see anything in the PD ordinance about, about the size of the units and, or, or what direction would be followed for the size of the unit. So it would either be, need to be based on the hillside design standards and guidelines or something else. But I think it needs to be specified. What, what is the deciding factor for deciding what the size of the units are?
Well, hillside says 6,000 max.
I, I know.
Do you want to reduce it?
But it, I don't, I didn't see it in the ordinance itself saying what would, you know, what is going to govern the, because it's, as it was proposed in the staff report, when this, if, at the point this PD ordinance is approved, the architecture on site would be going to the Development Review Committee. So, so that being the case, I just think it needs to be clear what, what's the deciding factor. Is it the hillside design standards and guidelines? Because this is an overlay, and it, it might default to the hillside standards and design guidelines, but I didn't see it in the PD ordinance. So that, maybe it's just a question to be answered. On the, on the cut and fill, I don't know that we've done this before, but since the, there's such a huge variance on the cut and fill, I wondered if there shouldn't be a maximum cut and fill specified, since it's going to be less, just to make sure that it doesn't creep up. Because what we were being asked to do, and what's being asked here, is just to allow an exception to the hillside design standards and guidelines, but it doesn't say what it is. So I just wondered if it would be sensible to put a limit on the maximum cut and fill.
It would not be allowed to be any greater than what's shown in the development plans. And I believe we did describe those numbers in the staff report.
Yes, you did.
Okay. Well, could that be in the PD ordinance as well?
It is specified that it would be, match insignificant, substantial conformance with the proposed development plans.
Okay. And then the last thing was, I brought it up earlier, it was about the, with the issue of this, you know, eighteen acres going to less, taking a look at the fencing requirements and seeing if it would be worthwhile to have something more restrictive than is currently in our hillside design standards and guidelines, to make sure that the wildlife can move freely through that area.
We have a fencing subcommittee or new language on fencing, Mr. Paulson? We have meetings on fences and hillsides. Where is that at?
That was continued to a date uncertain by the council. I believe a few of the parties are working through.
Yeah, since it's not decided, and since this PD ordinance is likely to be decided, I wanted to put that out there because it could be put into the PD ordinance, since the PD ordinance.
We've had other PDs who have done that.
Yeah.
Good. Consider it done.
That was it.
Okay. Is that all in the motion? I'm trying to figure out how to get home. Commissioner Janoff?
To be more clear, lot six and seven, to get down to the eight.
Commissioner Badami?
I would like to put a range in there. So even a further reduction, in addition to lot six and seven, but lot one, two, and three, they're in direct conflict with the hillside design standards and guidelines regarding mandatory standards. So I would like some consideration for a further reduction, not just eight, but maybe giving council a range between allowing lots, not 10, but between five and eight, with emphasis given to lot one, two, three, and in particular, six and seven.
I'm, I'm wondering what you just said, what lots one, two, and three, they're not, they're not in the hillsides. They're not subject to hillside standards and guidelines. They're on the level. I would, so you're right about those other guys, but I don't think one, two, or three are in there. This is a split property. Half is hillsides, half is flat.
Excuse me, is it being zoned hillside residential, and therefore, all the lots on that would be considered?
Subject to the hillside?
Yeah.
Correct.
Good. I stand corrected.
Thank you.
But I would add, when we talk about those houses, to pull them away from existing houses.
Well.
As far as practical.
Okay. I, I agree with that, but I just want to make one other point here. With these two neighborhoods, we're comparing apples to oranges because the Surrey Farms, the existing Surrey Farms neighborhood is not subject to the hillside design standards and guidelines. But you've got a new neighborhood, Surrey Farm Estates, that is. So you've got different performance standards that are really going to impact the Surrey Farms neighborhood. And that's why we put a lot of protection into even developing our hillsides for the impacts that it has on a neighborhood. And that's where we go with that general plan, with neighborhood preservation and protection.
Right.
And I, I got to wonder, where did the farms come into Surrey? It seems like we're taking the farm out of Surrey. I mean, were there ever farms in that neighborhood? Does anybody know?
There were farms in the Spanish. I would have, I would have hoped when we, when we entered it in the contract with them for the Williamson Act and declared it an agricultural preserve, it was at that point in time, at least, some type of farm or agricultural use.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't know how we do it, but I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'm getting totally confused by all this, and I don't, there's nothing to hang on that tree. So I, we've had this question before, and I don't know whether, if the seconder agrees and I can withdraw my motion, or whether we have to vote. You ruled on this.
I agree.
Well, I want to hear what the council says.
Currently, as I understand, but I don't know if the first and the second have approved this, is the motion was to make all the findings into your beginning, and then I have at least, and count, and staff, which I manage, you know, reducing the trees to the maximum extent possible, public easement in the open space, making sure that those requirements are in there. The size of the units has to comply with the hillside design guidelines. The cut and fill will be no more than the development plans. We'll make sure all those things are in there. And fencing requirements to allow for wildlife. And right now, at least, but I don't know where we were, there was to reduce it to eight, with six and seven being the emphasis, but then it was by Commissioner Badami to make it between five and eight and include one, two, and three. That's what I, I have heard so far as, but I have not heard the maker of the motion agree to all.
I cer, I certainly don't agree to what Commissioner Badami said with one, two, and three. I don't agree with that. The rest of it, I, yes, like, I, to the extent that amendment has to be made of the motion, I would, I would.
All the rest are acceptable.
I would accept that. The one I would, I would not suggest hers because, well, not, it's not important why because, I just wouldn't.
Okay. And the second, are those all acceptable to the?
They're acceptable to me if there's the presumption of what I said earlier about pulling those houses away from existing houses. Some of them seem to be right on top of another one. Just move them. Move them and lower them. Is that acceptable? Tom?
I don't know what it means. Just move the houses. What does that mean?
Get it away from existing houses to the extent possible. That's what I want town council to know.
The way you state it, I guess, is fine, as, as far as possible.
Commissioner Janoff?
Yeah, I would just phrase it differently. I would say, and redistribute the remaining lots so that they are preserving as much of the neighborhood compatibility, consistent with the, the general plan and the hillside specific plan.
I agree.
At the moment, then, it's a recommendation of eight. Is that correct? Is that right?
Yes.
That's my recommendation.
That's the motion. That's the motion. Commissioner Hudes.
Just curious whether the maker of the motion supports eight to go forward.
As presently stated, yes, I would support it to go forward. Now, you asked that question for a reason. It was a reason.
No, it's your motion, and I haven't heard you weigh in on probably the most important aspect of it, which is the number of lots.
Oh, to move this along, if it's eight lots, that's fine with me. The council will ultimately decide whether it's eight lots, or 10 lots, or two lots, or whatever they're going to decide. But eight, to move this thing along, yes, I would support that.
We're saying eight, as I see it, because we want six and seven off that slope, and preserve that view and preserve that hill. So that, eight's a good place to start. Anyone else? Commissioner Hudes.
Coming back to the trees, I'm not comfortable with the language to the max, to say, save trees to the maximum extent possible. I'd like to list specific trees, and for the applicant to provide compelling evidence why these couldn't be saved, if that would be...
To whom is the compelling evidence given?
To the council.
Okay.
When they consider it.
If you want to attach, if you want to attach the numbers of the trees, I don't have a problem with that. And the second point, it was okay, too, so.
Yeah. So I'm just going to list them now?
Well, why don't you just give them the numbers after...
Okay.
Was that the list you previously mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah, we have all of those, and then also the grove on lot seven.
Okay. And, you know, with regard to that, that list was prepared with an illegible format and with not a serious consideration of the two-access option. So I think that it needs serious scrutiny on the trees.
May I, to the chair?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
That'll be part of the recommendation.
May I suggest to the applicant that they provide the commission, notwithstanding that it may be gone, with a clearer and more legible map showing the trees? That will allow certainly those of us who wish to to understand this better. And Commissioner Hudes has done a lot of work on this, and it would help him, and ultimately, it will help the council. So I would request that a clearer exhibit of those trees without blocking out the numbers be provided to us. That's simply a request, so.
All right. Further discussion on the motion. My goodness. Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously, six to zero. In a situation like this, Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are not appeal rights. This is a recommendation, so it will be forwarded to the town council, and the mayor will place it on an agenda.
Thank you. Commission matters. Are there any matters that the commissioner wishes to bring forth? How about a report from the director of community development, Mr. Paulson?
Very quickly, last week, the council approved the general plan update work plan. So we are in the midst of preparing an RFP, which will be sent out for consultants to submit proposals for the preparation of the general plan update. And then next week, the council will, depending on the length of the agenda, potentially consider the North Forty specific plan amendments, and then provide direction and/or come to a final conclusion on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There being nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.